Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call the, like to call to order, City Council of Rona Park. Today is Tuesday, February the 11th. Would you please stand while we do the land acknowledgement and salute to our flag? The city of Rona Park acknowledges that indigenous peoples are the traditional stewards of the land. Let it be acknowledged that the city of Rona Park is located on the traditional homelands of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria comprised of Coast Miwok and Southern Pomo peoples. Mr. McIntaker, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Elward?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanborn?
Here.
Mayor Dujie?
Here.
All the council members are present.
Thank you. We're also joined on the dais by our city attorney, Michelle Kenyon, and by our city manager, Marcela Piedras. We're going to start with presentations. First up, golf course presentation by Tom Bugbee. Welcome, Tom. Welcome.
Close by and neighbors here. We are led by four core values. The first is financial performance. Second is stakeholder communication. That's a little bit of what we're here doing tonight. Community engagement is a very important part to us. We run municipal golf courses primarily. As part of that, we believe the taxpayers own these golf courses, and yet only about 10% of the public plays golf. So it's very important to us what we do to give back to that other 90% of the taxpayers. And fourth up is environmental stewardship. Golf courses often wrongly get bad reputations for what they do to the environment, and we believe it's part of our job and our mission to show the public that they're actually good for the environment, and there's a lot of benefits to them. And if cared for properly, you can have great golf course conditions and still be environmentally responsible. So over here, just a quick overview of Foxtail. It's 36 holes, you know, two different 18-hole golf courses, a 26-stall driving range, practice green and practice bunker out there, all highly used on a regular basis. And we're very proud to be home, and this is even since we put this presentation together originally. Unfortunately, it's changed a little bit. We're home to two high school teams, and we've been traditionally home to Sonoma State's men's and women's golf teams, which, as everyone's aware, are facing their own ending here soon. So we're very sad to get that news. Next slide. So over the last couple of years, we've been engaging in a lot of capital investment into the golf course. In 2023, we did two very large projects. We went through the north course and completely renovated all the bunkers on that course. And in addition, we installed Top Tracer out on our driving range. That's a technology enhancement for the driving range, meant for the golfers, but also to attract a lot of non-traditional golfers to the golf course and create both an entertainment center as well as a kind of soft entry into the game of golf, which can be intimidating at times. And in 2024, one of our big projects, there was a long, a long time ago, we lost one of the two bridges that helped us cross the creek there on the number six hole on the south course, and we were able to purchase a new one and with the assistance of the city, get that installed. So I mentioned community programming, and again, it's something that's very important to us. Again, this golf course is one of the largest assets of the city of Rona Park. It's important to us that we give back in any way possible. I won't bore you by explaining every event that's up here, but on a regular basis, we host events out there, and the vast majority of them are free to the community. And they're very much focused on kids and locals that maybe otherwise wouldn't use the golf course on a regular basis. And if they just come by and enjoy the facilities, that's a win for us. A side benefit is it sometimes removes the intimidation factor, especially for kids. So all of a sudden, we are producing new golfers at the same time. This upcoming year, we have a big calendar. I would encourage all of you to either go to our website or follow us on social media, so that way you can see what's happening out there. But virtually every month, we have at least one event, and a lot of times, we are able to jam in two or three events throughout the year. On the youth student and junior program side, again, this is part of that community and giving back. We have a really big calendar of events. It's one of the advantages of having two golf courses plus the driving range out there is we have a lot of capacity. So everything from our youth on course program where kids are allowed to join the program and play the golf course for just $5. First Tee North Coast, that is a national program is the First Tee, but we have a local chapter here based in Sonoma Marin County. I happen to be on the board of that, and Foxtail is one of our host sites. We do a lot of programming out there, and last year, we were able to host a tournament and raise over $30,000 for that program. The program specifically combines life lessons with golf and is targeting, again, kids that normally wouldn't have access to golf. So, you know, it's not the country club kid. Instead, it's kids that are maybe underserved or wouldn't have the resources to participate at the golf course normally. We also do U.S. Kids Golf Program, PGA Junior League out there. So the nice thing is you go out there, you see a lot of kids out there on the golf course. And then environmental programming, again, one of our core values, and there's a couple programs that we do. One that we're very excited about, we hosted an event in 2024, and we have two coming up in 2025. It's called the First Green, and it takes steam-based learning, and it brings kids out to the golf course where our agronomic team actually hosts them and walks them through the science lessons that can be found out on a golf course. And again, it creates a new avenue into the golf course for these kids, and at the same time, sometimes creates a little excitement about the career opportunities that are out there, that someone maybe wouldn't have thought of otherwise. And at the very least, the kids love the field trip, right? So if nothing else, that's a win. And then also, we're part of the Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary. It's a six-step program. We've been a member here for a couple of years now, but we're in the renewal process. Again, you have to renew yourself every three years, but you have to go through and show where you've achieved these six things, including, you know, water conservation and minimizing fertilizer and chemical use on your golf course. And so we're very proud to be able to list Foxtail as one of the members of that program. And with that, that's just, again, a quick update. We just wanted to kind of make sure you knew everything that was going on out there, but I'm also happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that, and thank you for the presentation. And as you say, those golf courses are a treasure in our town and a great asset, and we entrust you with that, with that asset, and we'd like to see that you're being good stewards of that asset. So I'll open it up to my colleagues. Any questions? No? Okay. Samantha, Councilmember Rodriguez?
No questions. Just thank you for the work that's done out there. Top Tracer's great. I go out there and use it every once in a while, and everyone always has a good time at the tournaments as well. I know the Rona Park Chamber has one coming up in May, so looking forward to that, and appreciate the work being done with, with the youth as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? And neither do I. Thank you very much. You have a very nice evening. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, we're going to do a proclamation. If we can get Director Cindy Bagley up here. We are going to do a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Rona Park proclaiming February 9th through the 15th as Random Acts of Kindness Week. Please, over here. No, no. I want to get a good look at you. Whereas kindness is a fundamental value that strengthens communities by fostering respect, inclusion, and goodwill among residents, and whereas National Kindness Week is an opportunity to encourage acts of compassion, generosity, and positive engagement in our daily interactions, and whereas the city of Rona Park recognizes the importance of kindness in promoting mental wellness, well-being, excuse me, strengthening social connections, and enhancing the quality of life for all residents, and whereas small acts of kindness, such as helping a neighbor, expressing gratitude, or volunteering, contribute to a culture of empathy and civic engagement within our city, and whereas the city of Rona Park supports initiatives that inspire individuals, businesses, schools, and organizations to actively participate in acts of kindness throughout the community, and whereas the city of council encourages all residents to take part in Kindness Week by engaging in simple yet meaningful actions that promote kindness, understanding, and unity. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the city of council of the city of Rona Park hereby proclaims the week of February 9th through the 15th as Kindness Week in the city of Rona Park in alignment with National Kindness Week. The city encourages all residents, schools, businesses, and community organizations to participate in activities and initiatives that promote kindness, fostering a more connected and compassionate city for all. And I'm going to be happy to present this to you in just a moment, but I'm sure you've got some things to tell us about. So please, share.
We do. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're very excited to bring the I Heart Rona Park series of events to the community this week in celebration of Kindness Week. We thank you for the proclamation. I just want to give a shout out to Tiara Warner, our Recreation Manager, who we hired just two and a half, three years ago, three years ago. And she has brought a lot to this community in her short time here. The I Heart Rona Park brand and in celebration of Kindness Week was really her brainchild, and we have blossomed a bit from there, but this really was something that she brought from her mind in how we can celebrate kindness in the friendly city. So we have added a little bit every year. This year, you see on the screen our Kindness Week activities, starting with our Rona Park fan favorites. And that is an opportunity for our residents to shine a light on their favorite businesses here in Rona Park. So this is not just about recreation. This is about the community as a whole. We've already had 600 people participate in voting for that, and at the end of the voting, we will deliver a I Heart Rona Park Fan Favorite sticker to the business to display in their window for the year, and we have lots of categories. So we encourage residents to go on and tell us who your favorite business is, so we can celebrate those folks. Random Acts of Kindness, we have sent to the community a request to tell us what they have seen as random acts of kindness in the community throughout the year, and send us those stories. We will be posting those on our social media, so you'll be able to see the accounts of people, just exactly what the resolution or the proclamation says. Small, random acts of kindness in the community that just happen every day in our grocery stores, in our parks, along our creeks. So we'll be looking forward to sharing those stories with the community. On Sunday, we just did our community yoga and sound bath. That sold out with 75 people participating. Our yoga instructor did a free yoga class for all of those participants. We gave out I Heart Rona Park swag to them as well, which was fun. And yesterday, I don't think, I think Councilmember Elward was able to attend. We had our first Senior Health and Wellness Fair with over 100 people participating and lots of nonprofits there to really shine a light on how our senior community can be well, both physically and emotionally. It was very well attended. It was a feel-good event. It's definitely going to be something we'll bring back year over year, and of course, did our annual free senior portraits, which is always a fun time for our seniors. Tomorrow, we'll be doing the rec expo and job fair. This is new this year, so we will be highlighting all of our contract instructors and their classes to the community. We'll be doing a job fair for positions that we have available in the Recreation Division. Our HR team will be with us, so we'll be able to help screen folks right on site. We'll also be doing free headshots for anybody that wants to come and get a headshot done. And we are also collecting business attire. So if anybody has business attire that they no longer want but is still in good condition, we ask that they drop it off at the community center tomorrow. We will then be donating it to a nonprofit who sells clothes, like a Goodwill or Redwood Empire. So we will be taking those donations there. And then on the 13th, we have our annual trivia night. This year, we're partnering with Old Kaz, who will be doing the trivia at Spreakles Performing Arts Center. This is also sold out with 50 participants. It sold out as soon as we released the date. So it's a very fun time. We might be looking to expand and look for a bigger venue in the future because it does sell out very, very quickly. But again, this was all created, all of this is free to find different ways to bring our community together. We are in the quality of life business, and there's lots of different opportunities for people to engage in the friendly city through our I Heart Rona Park series. So if you haven't participated in any of these things, we invite you to. It really is just a way to celebrate the friendly city.
Fantastic, and thank you, and thank you to Tiara as well. We're going to get a little picture here. If everyone would like to get up, we're going to take a little picture. We're going to invite you to come up, Tiara, please. You try to pull this between you?
More red.
Right here. Here we go.
Ready? One, two, three.
Next up, I'd like to invite the deputy chief to come on up. We're going to do a little swearing in of Mr. Marty Smith. Welcome and welcome.
Check. Good evening. Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. As always, it's always great to swear people in and add them to the rank and file. We have an amazing team that serves this community every day, and we also have an amazing team that goes out and recruits and gets our people across the finish line. With that, not only is our public safety team, but human resources, all of you that approve the positions, our city managers. So without the collaborative effort, we couldn't do what we do. So Rona Park is a great place to live because we keep hiring great people. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Martin Smith. So he comes to Rona Park Public Safety after working as a police officer in San Francisco for the last 10 years. Martin mainly worked downtown in the Mission and northern police districts with a short tour in the Sunset and Ingleside neighborhoods. I told him not quite as busy. Prior to his police service, Martin was a 911 dispatcher for the city of San Francisco for three years, so he brings to us that experience. He went to UC Davis, where he attained a bachelor's degree in political science, and then a minor in writing. While he studied, he was also a member of the UC Davis Fire Department. So full circle. We found a good one. Since moving to Cattati, some of his hobbies are driving his vintage car or riding his vintage motorcycle. That's if he's not in the garage trying to figure out why it's not starting. He likes to do home improvement, and he likes to camp in faraway places and to coin his phrase, "where the traditional minivan cannot be found." So today, Marty Smith is with us with his parents, Quentin and Debbie, and his friends from San Francisco Police Department. So with that, we'd like to welcome Marty to the city, and I'll swear him in here in a sec. All right, I don't have the, I don't have the hand mic, but we'll be good. Marty, if you can raise your right hand, and if one of my staff can take pictures of him getting sworn in, that'd be great, or else I'll hear about it from my communications person. His dad is going to, is going to pin him after I swear him in. Awesome. All right. I, and state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. All right. So Marty asked his dad, Quentin, to pin his badge. I thought he was getting out his checkbook. See, you don't have to do that anymore.
Sorry, this is taking a while. And we'd like to invite the family up. We're going to take a picture, so.
All right. Marty, if you want to bring your family up, those that came with you, we'll take a picture with you guys, and then public safety employees, if you can come up as well. You want everyone, Mayor? Everyone, all at the same time. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Get in here. Everybody.
One, two, three.
Oh, perfect. Well, it's time for public comment now. We'll let them just take a quick moment to exit the chamber. So we'd like to go ahead and open up the public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, there's some lovely pink cards over here to the right. Please just hand them to the clerk. I have so far just one public comment from the one and only Mr. Peter Alexander. Good evening, Peter.
Good evening. Blessings to all. I wasn't sure what I was going to come up with, so I just, I'm flying with it. So hallelujah and blessings again. So if this fellow, Trump, is so hot to fix America, why hasn't he commanded every bar association lawyer in public office removed or and/or arrested for being in direct opposition to the U.S. Constitution's 13th Amendment? And I could spend much more time on that, but it's really simple. It clarifies that no one with a title of nobility, especially from a foreign power like the bar, the British Attorney Registry, may hold public office in America. Hallelujah again. Here's a point to ponder. Who will argue with the almighty God for empowering two bisexuals with such blessings of strong spirit with authority to both lead and conquer, speaking of Alexander the Great and Issa, AKA Yahshua, AKA Jesus? Alexander the Great made a statement, said, "Without knowledge, skill cannot be focused. Without skill, strength cannot be brought to bear, and without strength, knowledge may not be applied. Upon the conduct of each depends the fate of all. All time is now, and now is the time, a time of universal deceit and media quite bogus, requiring the faith of a centurion called to action through Logos. I am Peter. I'm summoning you all to command your warriors of the Christos light to freeze frame the economy and finishing the fight, in the spirit of Crazy Horse, in the spirit of Alexander the Great, in the spirit of Sunny Barger, each and every one such serious patriotic charger. Each and every one supported by the Spirit of Christ, which this world could never heist. The black wolf howling to strike this full moon, this most beautiful warrior's high noon. After all, the poisoning, both financially and chemically, by those Big Pharma, so too big on harm, so light on charm. Along with the medical scam insurance crowd, the public has had enough, and we won't take it anymore," saying it quite loud. Forty-day freedom strike attains promised peaceful desires for the evacuated homeownership insurance for fires. Labor strikes on the increase for corruption to terminally cease, and a nation so promised now on a celestial, spiritual, hands-on mission to name and claim the promised peace? We have had enough of the bankers and bar lawyers insanity. Comes now the commanding
I have, I went through a very difficult 2024. On January 9th, 2024, we woke up at 5:15 to a fire in our house, and we were asleep and the fire was trying to take us out, basically. And then when I got out front before the trucks got there, I was fighting with the hose by myself while my wife was on the phone calling 911, and it was quiet. It was so quiet. I remember yelling at my neighbor to get up because his hot tub was on fire, you know, because of the fire that I had set in my garbage can, apparently. So, but I remember it being so quiet, I was yelling so loud, but it was nothing coming out because of the smoke. But that was the way the year started off for us. I thought I was just going to go inside and board the house up and take a shower and go to work, but we didn't get to live in a house again for the rest of the year, basically. So we just got back into the house. But the reason I'm here tonight, because as staff, as council members, there's plenty of times where people like me come in here and we complain, and because of our lives and legitimate complaints. We have our lives that are happening, but you know, when good things happen, we kind of tend to keep that to ourselves, but I didn't want to do that. I wanted to come in here and legitimately just call out three people in particular that, you know, were right there with us, along with many, many other city council or city staffers, that were just pleasant to us, that were just kind, you know, that had empathy towards us. And a lot of people knew what was going on because we asked for help, we asked for a lot of help. Bob Curry, city building official, his team over there were phenomenal, you know, went by the, and talked to them a few times and almost in tears as they asked me what happened because my wife sleeps like a rock. And if I hadn't been there that day, I don't know what would have happened. I heard the fire, I woke up. You know, if I didn't get in the shower and I went outside to check out what was that sound, then I don't know what would have happened. But I traveled too, so if I wasn't there because I was traveling, again, you know, those things go on. Julia Wharton and Steve Dobbs also over there in the permits, you know, Julia, every time I went in there, and I went in there a bunch of times, asking questions about permits, she was so kind and patient and just leading, showing us how to navigate the system when it's difficult, when you don't do that. Steve with the inspections, phenomenal, always there to try and help out and then point out certain things to help us move along. I'm going to go over just a little bit, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you go right ahead.
And, but, but many people also in the build department downstairs, because we had to change the garbage, we had to change the water, and then we had to cut stuff off, and they were every time, "How can we help?" It was more. It was so much more than what we call a friendly city. You know, the presentation here earlier, even what you started off saying, this week, you know, is going to be Kind Week, you know, so this is just a kind time. My family has experienced kindness throughout this whole year from the city of Rona Park, from residents. Our neighbors were each, you know, arm wrestling to see who was going to take us in that first couple of nights. It was, it was awesome. So when we came back and when we were there all year long, they just welcomed us back, they were in to help us every time. We have done that ourselves, and that's how we live our lives. So I am, I'm overjoyed, I'm full of gratitude, and I definitely wanted to come here and say thank you to that, thank you to you, Marcella, you know, for the team that you lead. Thank you to the team because it is, you know, your jobs every day, I'm sure, you're just going to work and coming home and taking care of your lives, but this family, you know, talks about you guys all the time with reverence. So, and then we tell everybody, and we tell a lot of people. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John. Thank you, and you're exactly right. Teamwork makes the dream work, and our team is amazing. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the, anyone else wish to address the public, council from the public? Okay, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go to the consent calendar. The mayor has a conflict on 7J as I lease real property at Sonoma Village, so we can take this in two bites. Would any of my fellow council members need to?
We can actually take it in one bite.
We can?
Say that you're going to abstain.
Sounds like we're going to take it in one bite, and I'm going to abstain. Questions, comments, anyone need to pull anything? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll motion to approve our consent calendar.
Okay, does that have a second?
I second that.
Okay. We'll do a vote by affirmation, is that all right? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I will abstain.
From just item 7J?
Seven, correct.
Thank you. The motion passes by 5-0 with the exception of item 7J, which passes with a 4-0-0-1 vote.
Okay, let us move to item 8A. Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association matters support letters of interest for appointments, for appointments to vacancies by the Mayors and Council Members Association Board and City Selection Committee, and authorize the mayor or mayors designate a vote on late nominations or alternate recommendations made at the February 15th, actually, February 13th, Mayors and Council Members Association and City Selection Committee meeting. And could we have the staff report, please?
Yes. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. On February 13th, the City Selection Committee and Mayors and Council Members Association Board of Directors will review letters of interest submitted by council members and make appointments to vacant positions. Staff is requesting that council consider supporting council members' letters of interest for various appointments, and then also authorize the mayor or their designate to vote on late nominations or alternate recommendations made at that February 13th meeting. So these next slides will show the available seats and who submitted letters of submission. So there is one seat available for the North Bay Division League of California Cities, and then there is also one seat for Sonoma County Agriculture Preservation and Open Space District Citizens Advisory Committee. Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit Commission has three seats, however, two of those seats have to also be members of SCTA, and then one is a non-SCTA appointment. And then the City Selection Committee appointments, there is one seat for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Board, one for the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District, and one for the Sonoma County Consolidated Oversight Board. So you can take them individually, or you can make a motion for all of them.
Thank you. We will take them individually, but before we do that, is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on this? Yes, okay, please step right up, tell us your name, and you have three minutes, so welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Councilman Alex DeCarli from Petaluma. I am running for the Ag and Open Space seat and also the non-SCTA SMART seat. For Ag and Open Space, I come from an old family around here. We've grown up in the countryside, taking care of the land, and, you know, also with my family's business of propane, I've spent years and years out in Sonoma Marin County learning all the different farms, all the farmers, all the landowners, all the roads. I know those like the back of my hand, I'm very well versed with it all. I want to continue to see that Sonoma County protect those spaces. They're beautiful, they're one of a kind, they're what makes us special and unique, and so I'd like to contribute with that. I'm also aware of too, you know, the matching grant programs that help open space in our parks, and I'd like to see that help, you know, not just Petaluma, but every other city in the county. With SMART, I, you know, I have about 10 years' experience in railroading, and, you know, I think that's kind of a unique perspective to have on the SMART board. You know, I want to see the railroad go as far north as possible. I think that will help all the cities, and in the same term, you know, freight, freight's kind of my big thing. That's sort of the Achilles' heel of the railroad. It struggles, it has to be subsidized to some degree, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there to, you know, bring more business to Sonoma County and all the cities along the main line. And, you know, it's something too that takes a lot of trucks off the road if we're able to find people that can do that. I've had people approach me that want to do freight, and so, and then at the same time, you don't have to subsidize the railroad quite as much if you have that going. So anyway, you know, I hope that you'd consider me for both seats, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Selena Morena, I think.
She's a little, right?
Oh, okay. So, okay, so she didn't submit that card, so we'll just leave that to the side. Okay, we're going to take this, anyone else at the public wish to comment on this? Okay, we'll close the public comment on this, and we'll take the first one first, the North Bay Division Executive Board, one seat to fill. Could I have a nomination from the floor, please?
I'd like to nominate Jackie Ellard from Rona Park to serve on the North Bay Division League of California Cities.
Thank you. Does that have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, can we do vote by affirmation, or is this a roll call vote?
Affirmation.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Seeing none, carries 5-0. Now, we're going to take this in two bites with SMART, two appointments. They have to be from Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and I'll take motion from the floor.
I'd like to move that we select Gerard Judice from Rona Park for the first seat.
I second that.
And the second seat?
Victoria Fleming from Santa Rosa for the second seat.
That's not on this one. It's between Janice, Todd, and Ariel.
I'd like to make a motion for Ariel Kelly for the second seat.
Okay, so will you revise that? We need to revise the motion then.
We have.
Did I get in the weeds already?
Yeah. So we need to either amend the original motion
That's what I was going to say.
Or the first motion, which should be withdrawn?
I'll amend it.
Okay.
And I apologize, I was confused on this. I apologize, I was confused. I'd like to nominate Gerard Judice from Rona Park and Ariel Kelly from Hillsburg for the first two seats.
And does the second agree with that amendment?
I'll second that, yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Sure, let me just say that that carries 5-0. Go right ahead.
I have a question
Yes.
In case Ariel doesn't make it, can we have a second person into that, just to back up?
Basically, the staff report gives me authority to go ahead and do that.
I'm happy with you having the authority to do that, because otherwise, it's a mess if he has to do what we say after that, because there's so many
There's a lot of permutations here.
It's incredible, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it, but I needed to put it out there so that our constituents said that we had that option.
Okay.
Thank you. The second seat, I'd like to nominate Victoria Fleming from Santa Rosa.
Hang on, I'm not even there yet. Now, we're going to go for the non-SCTA seat. Can I have a nomination from the floor, please?
I'd like to nominate Victoria Fleming from Santa Rosa.
Okay, does that have a second? I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries 5-0. Next, Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District, one seat to fill the expiring term of Gerard Judice of Rona Park.
I will appoint Gerard Judice for the seat.
Okay, we have a motion, does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that carries 5-0. And then finally, we have the Sonoma County Consolidated Oversight Board, one, two letters we've received. Can I have a motion from the floor, please?
I'll motion for Jackie Ellard.
I'll second that.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries 5-0. Next, Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District, one seat to fill the expiring term of Gerard Judice of Rona Park.
I will appoint Gerard Judice for the seat.
Okay, we have a motion, does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that carries 5-0. Congratulations again.
Yay. Good job.
Okay, we got through that. Now we'll go ahead and go to item 8B. We're going to get a fiscal year 2024, 2025 mid-year financial informational update, and I believe we have Betsy House here, and I think city manager would like to open this up and give us a little narrative here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address you related to a very important topic, which is our finances, our city finances. I really want to commend our finance department for all their hard work that they have been doing. They obviously are working on audits, our budget, and just many, many other important work that's coming out. And also, of course, our department heads, of course, our Director of Finance, Betsy, will be providing you with this mid-year financial update, which is going to give you an idea of where we currently are with our revenues and expenditures. This is very important, particularly as we are going to be moving into our budget development process. And also, as you know, on Thursday, we will be holding our strategic workshop, and so I think it's important that you have an idea where we stand financially with our revenues in relation to our general fund and obviously our special revenue, primarily our enterprise funds. So, Ms. Hose, if you can please proceed with the presentation, and again, thank you to you and your team for all the hard work. Appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager told you, I'm here to present the City of Rona Park fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year financial update. And the mid-year will update our significant funds, as the city manager said, the general fund, we'll have the casino supplemental fund, and we'll do the water and sewer operations for the enterprise funds. And then we will conclude with next steps. So we're going to start with an overview of the general fund. So this slide provides information on the budget as adopted, the amendments to the budget, the dollar amount of the changes, and the percentage change for revenues, expenditure, and other sources and uses, which is generally transfers. Revenue appropriations have increased by $16,000, which is too small to move the dial up there, so you'll see it says zero, but it was $16,000 that we received, and that was for an animal behavior training grant offered by the University of California-Davis. Our expenditure appropriation increases consist of $16,000 for contractual services, which offsets the grant that we received, $87,000 to replace a total public safety vehicle, and the council already appropriated that money, and $1.5 million in encumbrance carryovers from fiscal year 23-24. So that's for things that we plan to spend. The purchase orders were held, and we hadn't made the purchase until the next year, and so we rolled those appropriations forward. Lastly, we have our other sources and uses, and that has a net expenditure increase of $8.3 million. Now, as you can see on the chart, it goes from 11.8 to 3.4, and that's because we had more increases, more revenues, and now that we've brought some expenditures in, it has basically reduced that offset. So it looks like we aren't getting as much, but that's due to an increase in the expenditures. So these changes in appropriation result in additional use of fund balance reserves of about $10 million. So on this slide, we get into the details of our revenue by category. Each category is presented with the amended budget, the amounts received as of January 15th, the budgeted amount yet to be collected, and the percentage received compared to the amended budget. Property taxes is at 55% or $6.8 million collected of our $12.3 million annual budget in secured, unsecured, and supplemental taxes. And this is mainly because property tax owners or property owners often pay their full tax bill in December, and so you end up with more in the beginning, and then they come through with
transfers. Revenue appropriations have increased by $16,000, which is too small to move the dial up there. So, you'll see it says zero, but it was $16,000 that we received, and that was for an animal behavior training grant offered by the University of California-Davis. Our expenditure appropriation increases consist of $16,000 for contractual services, which offsets the grant that we received, $87,000 to replace a total public safety vehicle, and the council already appropriated that money, and $1.5 million in encumbrance carryovers from fiscal year 2324. So, that's for things that we plan to spend. The purchase orders were held, and we hadn't made the purchase until the next year. And so, we roll those appropriations forward. Lastly, we have our other sources and uses, and that has a net expenditure increase of $8.3 million. Now, as you can see on the chart, it goes from 11.8 to 3.4, and that's because we had more increases, more revenues. And now that we've brought some expenditures in, it has basically reduced that offset. So, it, it looks like we aren't getting as much, but that's due to an increase in the expenditures. So, these changes in appropriation result in additional use of fund balance reserves of about $10 So, on this slide, we get into the details of our revenue by category. Each category is presented with the amended budget, the amounts received as of January 15, the budgeted amount yet to be collected, and the percentage received compared to the amended budget. Property taxes is at 55% or $6.8 million collected of our $12.3 million annual budget in secured, unsecured, and supplemental taxes. And this is mainly because property tax owners or property owners often pay their full tax bill in December, and so you end up with more in the beginning, and then they come through with April, and then there's a small amount that comes through in June. Last year at this time, we had collected 52.7% or $6.7 million of our $12.8 million budget for property taxes. Sales and other tax collections stand at 42.3%. Collections reflect only four months of sales tax collections. It usually runs two months behind. Additionally, December sales tax, which is generally one of the biggest sales tax months, has not yet been accounted for. Another factor to consider is that the new Measure H Sales Tax Fund, and that's the improved and enhanced local fire protection, paramedic service, and disaster response transactions, and use tax ordinance. Boy, that's long. We call it Measure H. It is in the budget, but none of those funds have been received. If you remove the effects of the new measure, we are at 51.2% collected. Comparatively, last year at this time, we had collected 33.5% or $5.4 million of our $16.2 million annual budget. So, the 33% was so low because the budget was overestimated, and so we didn't collect as much as we had budgeted. Transient occupancy taxes trending at 41.4% collected. TOT is also collected in arrears, but it's trending in line with last fiscal year. Operator compliance continues to be a challenge in the collection of this revenue stream. Comparatively, last year at this time, we had collected 34.1% or $1.5 million of our $4.5 million annual budget. Licenses and permit revenue, the representing only 3% of our annual budget revenue, we have collected 75.2% of the $1.6 million budget for licenses and permits. Business licenses and plan check fees are ahead at 50%, while animal license fees are slightly lower than expected at this point in time. Comparatively, last year at this time, we had collected 64% or $600,000 of our $1.7 million annual budget. Interest and rents has already exceeded our $1.5 million annual budgeted amount by $200,000. We have been focusing on increasing our investment opportunities, and it has paid off. Currently at 109%, it is anticipated that this trend will level out a bit as the interest rates are dropping a little bit. Franchise fees mainly comprise of refuse, PG&E, broadband cable, are collectively trending at $1.4 million or 43.5% of budgeted revenue received. Several delayed PG&E payments have resulted in the revenue sources not achieving the 50% target at this time. Comparatively, last year at this time, we had collected 45.2% or $1.4 million of our $3.1 million annual budget. Charges for services is generated by development services, public safety, public works, and community services. Collections at the mid-year mark are at 43.7% of our $2.9 million budget. As with the previous year, developer deposit revenue is currently trending lower in the first part of the year. This revenue is tied to developer deposit expense, and so if these funds are not received, we don't expend the funds on the other side. Comparatively, last year at this time, we had collected 37.7% or $1.2 million of our $3.2 million annual budget. The last two sources on this slide, community services and cost allocation revenue, collectively represent 6.8% of the annual budgeted revenue. Together, these sources are trending at about Donation grant revenue and revenue from other agency accounts for just under 1% of our $50.7 million revenue budget. At this mid-year point, we've collected 69,000 or 14.3% of the $479,000 budget. Many of these are billed and collected in the second half of the fiscal year. Other revenues account for approximately 5% of the total revenue, and we've received 32.2%. Approximately $900,000 of the $2.5 million budget in this group is due to the other post-employment benefits trust or OPEP distributions. The city had previously invested monies in a CERT or the California Employers Retire Benefits Trust, and we, we invested in that. We've had interest earnings, and now, based on our actuarial projections, that trust is now paying us back. So, we are no longer putting monies in, but we are now receiving those distributions, and we should get about $900,000. So, you know, investing in the future does pay off.
Which line is that? Is that reflected in?
It's in the other revenues line.
Thank you.
Let's see. In summary, at mid-year, we've collected $26.2 million or 48.2% of the budgeted revenues. We are trending to meet or exceed the annual budgeted revenues. Last year at this time, we had collected $28 million, which is about 51.3% of the budget. On this slide, I will cover the general fund mid-year expenditures by department. Each are presented with their amended budget, the expenditures posted to the general ledger through January 15, the remaining appropriations available to spend, and the percentage spent compared to the amended budget. Overall, we have spent $33 million or 51.5% of the $64 million revised budget. Last year at this time, we had spent $23.9 million, which was 43.8% of the budget. Salaried and benefits are the most significant costs to the city, comprising 53% of our annual budget. Because of this, it is important to review these expenditures separately from services and supplies and capital outlay. The general fund figures reported in this major review reflect approximately 49% of salary and benefit costs incurred. Services and supplies expenditures in the general fund are tracking at about 62% or $13 million of the $21 million budget. Capital outlay expenditures are trailing at 34.6 or $3 million of the $8.9 million budget, and this is a very typical pattern. It takes us a little bit of time to do the work and do the billings and transfer the money, so it usually lags behind. And with that in mind, we will move on to the individual departments. First up is administration, and that is comprised of city council, city manager, city clerk, economic development, human resources, and legal services. Administration overall has spent 47.7% of budget. Salaried and benefits is trending lower at 44.9% spent, mainly due to a vacant position in the city manager's office. 51.1% of services and supplies budget has been expended. This is slightly overspent due to an unanticipated 30% rate increase for LAVCO dues over last year and League of City dues that were higher than expected, and between those two, it's about $15,000. Finance has spent 48.2% of budget. This department has incurred 42.7% of their salaries and benefits and 66.4% of services and supplies. Finance has had salary savings due to having several vacant positions, which are in the process of being filled. The salary savings have been offset by an increase in extra help contract costs. Development and services, which includes the homelessness division, has spent $5.5 million or 62.3% of budget. This department has incurred 47.4% of their salaries and benefits budget and 69.7% of services and supplies. Homelessness contractual services are of $2.9 million are 100% spent for the year, which skews the percentage of, to 69.7 for the department as a whole. Additionally, developer deposit expenditures are underspent, as I explained previously when we discussed the revenue. Public safety has spent $12.4 million or 52.2% of budget. This department has incurred 52.1% of their salaries and benefits budget, and this is pushing about the 50% mark due to an increase in overtime and shift differential pay. Services and supplies are on target at about 50.5%. Capital outlay expenditures are sitting at 65% of budget. Council recently approved the purchase of six new police vehicles and the replacement of one vehicle totaling $637,000. Five of the seven authorized vehicles were purchased prior to January. Animal services has spent $200,000 or 28.8% of its budget. It has spent 20.5% of their salaries and benefits and 53.2% of services and supplies. It had been planned that the animal services salaries for '24, '25 would have been charged to the community services administration budget, and we will need to be doing a budget amendment and some journal entries to align the expenditures with the budget. Public works has spent $1.4 million or 40.5% of budget. This department has spent 37.9% of their salaries and benefits budget and 42.2% of their services and supplies. The salary savings are most notable in parks maintenance, and that is because one staff member has been moved from the parks maintenance budget over to the casino mitigation budget for operating purposes this year. Contract services savings are most prevalent in sustainability, and special department expenses are below 50%. Community services, which includes the Performing Arts Center, has spent $1.9 million or 57.8% of budget. This department has spent 61.9% of the salaries and benefits budget, 44.7% of services and supplies, and 106.5% of their capital outlay budget. Typically, salaries trend higher between July and December months, and that's due to the summer cycle for programs and events. In addition, the animal service staff is now charging to community services administration while the budget is still in animal services, and as I had explained, we are going to be correcting that. Overall, we have spent $33 million or 51.5% of the $64 million revised budget. Last year at this time, we had spent $23.9 million, which was 43.8% of budget. So, the city manager has a contingency budget of $120,000, and that has been utilized to date. However, funds are going to be needed to cover the previously discussed increase for LAVCO and the League of California Cities in the amount of $15,000, and that will simply be a switch of appropriations from city manager contingency over to the city clerk's budget to cover those costs. And that concludes the review of the general fund. The next slide will provide a review of the casino supplemental fund. Casino supplemental revenues are at 25.4% received at mid-year. The revenue reflects only one quarter of the fiscal year. The last quarter is normally received in September and accrued at year end. So, this is very typical for the collections to run behind if they are received quarterly. Casino supplemental expenditures are 1.1% spent. As you can see, we had an appropriation increase in operations. This was a small carryover encumbrance from the prior year in the amount of $22,000 for weed abatement in the city creeks. Net transfer appropriations increased by $5.6 million to fund projects. These are also carryforward appropriations from fiscal year 2324 to reestablish transfers to fund capital and non-capital projects previously approved by the Roanoke Park Foundation. Oh, I'm sorry, the city council. To date, this fund has received more monies than we have expended, which is typical for construction projects and other non-capital projects. The next slides will provide a review of operations for our two largest enterprise funds. In the water fund, we had an appropriation increase of $100,000 for contract services for carryover encumbrances from fiscal year 2324 and $4.9 million carryover from fiscal year 2324 appropriations to reestablish transfers for capital projects, bringing the total expenses to $16.2 million. Water enterprise revenues are at 39% received at mid-year, while expenses are up 42.2%. The lower-than-expected revenue is due to an overestimation of water revenue projections. A more accurate projection should have been around $9.6 million, and that's about $1.4 million less as compared to the, to the prior year. A water rate study is in progress to identify if water rates are sufficient to fund future water fund operations and capital improvements. Water enterprise operational expenses are at 42.2% spent. Salaried and benefits are at 46% of budget. Water purchases, our largest operating expense, is at 63.6% higher, which is a normal pattern. Customer consumption is higher between July through September and reduced over the winter months. The cost is driven by the actual customer's water consumption, and the cost should average out by year end. Other notable outliers are capital asset acquisitions, depreciation, and debt principal. Collectively, the fiscal year budget is $2 million. At mid-year, $0 have been expensed. Factoring these out of the totals, the adjusted operational expense percentage is about 51.1%, which is right about right. Water enterprise transfers consist primarily of capital improvements projects that are specific to water operations. Of the $4.7 million revised annual budget, projects have been at about $1.6 million expensed or 34.9% thus far. In the sewer fund, we had an appropriation increase of $100,000 for contract service carryover encumbrances from fiscal year 2324 and $10.9 million to carryover '23, '24 appropriations to reestablish transfers to fund capital projects. Sewer enterprise total revenue is at about 50.8% collected. This collection rate is trending across residential, multifamily, and commercial accounts. Several of our large accounts, which are only invoiced at year end, are slightly distorting the mid-year percentages. The modified operational revenue percent excluding these accounts billed actually counts to 54.5% collected. Salaried and benefits are at 45.3% of total annual budget, while operations excluding capital outlay and depreciation are at 45.4% of budget. The modified operational expense percentage, including the subregional costs and excluding depreciation and capital outlay, is at 55.4%, which falls in line with the 54.5% modified revenue collections. Like water enterprise transfers, the sewer enterprise transfers consist primarily of funding capital improvements that are specific to sewer operations. Of the $10.9 million revised annual budget, projects have incurred $1.2 million in expenses or 10.9% thus far. This concludes my presentation of the mid-year update and brings us, oops, apologies, and brings us to our next steps.
Okay. Thank you very much, Betsy, for that very informative and complete presentation, and thank you for making it digestible for us. Before I turn to the public, do you have any additional narrative that you'd like to provide to the council?
Just, Mayor, thank you. That, as you can see, I mean, we have provided you an update on where our revenues and expenditures are and also identifying where each of our city departments is as it relates to our budget. Obviously, as pointed out here on the presentation, we're gonna be looking next steps in terms of our budget development, but I really welcome any questions council may have as our current situation is with our financials. Thank you.
Perfect. And before we do that, we'll open it up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll turn it over to my colleagues. Please.
Excellent report. I can't tell you how much confidence I feel in the finance department, having you there to watch over things. We have great directors and certainly starts in the finance department. If you can go back to slide number 22.
Oh.
Do you have a title?
No, I just wrote down the number. Twenty-six on the bottom. Keep going.
Two more.
There you go. So sometimes it looks like you're using parentheses for additions and subtractions. Am I getting confused there?
Are you?
Because it all came out as you were talking, I thought, okay, because like right here, it's just ten million at the bottom.
Correct.
It's ten million dollars.
That's timber.
Minus ten million dollars.
Yes, that's a minus ten million dollars.
That is a minus ten million dollars.
Yes.
All right, so that was my first question, because that kind of tracked the rest of the way through the.
Yes. So when we adopt the budget, we have a balanced budget when we adopt. Then we roll forward items from the prior year that didn't get funded, and so we move them in, and when that does go in, that puts us upside down in our budget, and so what we need to do at the end of the year, when we are looking at what is going to roll forward into the next year, we need to set those monies aside so that we still.
We're going to cover what's there.
We're going to be able to cover those things with, so it's not coming out of the current year budget, but it's coming from monies that we have set aside from the prior year.
And you anticipate that every time? You anticipate that happening?
Yes.
My second question is about Animal Services. Well, I don't, that's really, every once in a while, they're like, point eight minus point two is point six, and you had it point five. I mean, just, did you kind of round up or down, or? I think I'm stealing Jackie's question, because there was a couple of those.
Okay, so.
I forgot to write down the slide number.
That's okay.
I think that's on the expenditures.
Okay.
So amended budget, point eight, extended, expended through, point two, and then you have available to spend, point five. Is it just round down because of how the number came out, or?
It's probably rounded.
Just round down, okay.
Yeah.
I meant Excel, too, and I thought, well, she must have just rounded it down. And then you talked about interest and rents, how we're doing very well.
Yes.
What do you attribute that?
So we have been investing in some treasuries that have been doing very, very well. The CD rates have been very strong recently. A couple of months ago, we got news that it was possible that the interest rates would be dropping, and so we invested some more money into some other types of securities that were, they were in like the four point five percent rate, and so we've just been trying to focus more on making sure that our monies are well-invested. We've been looking at who is performing the best for us. So we have monies with the county, we have money with Leif, we have a private investment firm, Chandler, and then we have, I think it's called Multinational Bank, where we have a platform, and we can go on and we can buy CDs so that when we see that there's monies, and when they come due, then we have the opportunity to go back in and look for the best deal, so.
Ever think ten years ago that you'd get four and a half percent?
Well, you never know. You never know how it's going to go, but.
So you, we've, cities made almost a million dollars from these changes in investments. Thank you. There was a question or a statement that you made about homeless.
Oh, the contract?
Not the contract, but that it's cost two, it's the annual cost of homelessness is two point million, two point nine million a year, so we'll just round that up to three million. Is that an accurate number?
So.
And have we already gone through our budget for this year? I think it was here under Community Servi, I don't know which department.
On the last page.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. So, yes, we had contractual services of two point nine million dollars, which were a hundred percent spent for the year. So we've already paid that contract out.
There's no more due towards the end of the year because we've already paid it out? Is that what you're saying?
I believe we've just, I can check into that a little further.
Okay, I'm just curious if there anything due. I think, but what you're saying is.
Chair, recognize Ali Judice to respond to that question, please.
Provide as much information as I can. So the contracts that we are requesting through, or the funding that we're requesting through the budget, goes towards contracts that we provide throughout the year, so typically they're awarded. The money's essentially spent, there's no expectation that there are additional contracts that will be coming up.
Okay, thank you. And then when we're talking about TOT, you said operator compliance continues to be a problem.
Yes.
What's your magic wand for solving that problem? What is, what is your, how are we doing there? What do we anticipate doing to kind of have compliance not be an issue?
Yeah, so that's kind of a difficult issue to address. One of the things that we are looking at is, we are looking at possibly having an outside contractor work with us, and they have more ability to track and keep on top of things, and the main thing is to make sure that people are paying us on time. So recently, we have been paid, but last fiscal year, we got a little bit behind in enforcement, and so we have a few hotels in arrears, and so we are working with them. We're working with the city manager and the city attorney to try to get those hotels into compliance. I don't know if the city manager would like to add to that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Holes, and yes, absolutely, just like the same way that we contract for monitoring of our sales tax, we are looking at doing a similar type of setup for our TOT to ensure that all of our hotels are complying. We know they're collecting the TOT from visitors that are coming in and using their services, so we want to make sure that, you know, we work with them to ensure that that is being remitted to the city. So we're very excited to be able to contract this monitoring, because I think it's really going to be helpful not only for our finance team, but also to ensure compliance from our local hotels, so thank you.
Would it be inappropriate to say I support that sort of a compliance monitoring, or should we wait until it comes before us before I?
Well, you can make that as.
I support that decision to get compliance monitoring here. That's great idea.
And along with that, we will have the ability to audit, so that that's part of the compliance is that we have not audited in a while. We did it the last time I was here, but I don't believe it's been done since, and so we will go out and we will also do audits as well to make sure that all of the rules are being followed, because some of the rules are a little tricky, and we just like to make sure that the hotels are aware and that everything's being collected correctly.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one more question. On the city manager's budget, she has a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for.
Contingency.
Contingency funds. Did I read that correctly? She hasn't used any of those funds, but some is about to be transferred out?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you. Councilmember Elwood, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. That was easy for me to follow, and most of the questions councilmember Adam already asked, but I think maybe I have some questions, but I feel like it's appropriate for the workshop that we're going to do soon, so I'm going to keep it for that day. I just had the clarification of a few things that I was looking to see.
We're definitely not in a, I mean, not in a hurry, we're never in a hurry, but if you want to ask those questions, you go right ahead.
Yeah, but I feel like, I mean, now that I think about it, it will be more appropriate when we will have our session, we will have everything there.
Okay.
And I feel like that will be the appropriate place to ask for.
Okay.
More in-depth questions. Now I forgot what I was going to ask. Well, I guess I forgot what I was going to ask, but thank you for the presentation. It was really good. Looking forward for our session. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember?
I just want to say thank you to you and your team for all the work you do to make sure that we stay as compliant and balanced as possible. I know it's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of kind of going back and forth, and also taking into account that we also assist a lot of our residents here as well, and so being able to, be able to do that and let people still pay their bills when they're able to and keep us balanced is not an easy feat, so thank you for doing that and keeping the decimals in the right area.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
You are such a blessing to the city, Betsy. I mean, of all the things that we do, like finance impacts, touches every part of our city, and I just really appreciate your passion for finance and the way you formatted this presentation and delivered it for us. I usually go through the presentations, and then I write down what questions I have, and then I read the staff reports, and I had a few questions, and then the staff report answered all of them, so that was fun. And let's see here, one thing I just wanted to get double clarity on was you mentioned in the expenditure section, the transfer, something about how Animal Services and Community Services tie together. Are you saying that something currently in Community Services needs to get transferred into Animal Services, or was it vice versa?
So when the budget was put together last year, the intention was that Animal Services would charge to the Community Services admin, because they are now under the Community Services guise, but it looks like there was maybe a little bit of miscommunication, and so the budget ended up remaining in Animal Services, but the staff has been charging to Community Services. So what we will do is we'll do a budget amendment, we'll do an administrative budget amendment, and we will move the budget from Animal Services to Community Services, and then we will also move those charges so that everything looks like it's aligned.
So that was probably part of why I was feeling like, wow, the Animal Services spent to date is very low. It's because some of that admin needs to go into that.
Correct. It's interesting what pops out when you start doing the mid-year analysis and actually diving into the accounts and looking.
That's why we were so glad you were keeping up to date on that. And then something else you mentioned in the revenue slides was a delayed PG&E payment. What was that one?
Oh, so, let me go back there. I think the issue was that we simply hadn't received some of the PG&E payments, and so the revenues weren't as high as they normally would be because of some delayed payments. I'm not sure what has caused the delay.
Okay.
I could look and see if those payments have since been made, but, you know, we, there are some things that we expect kind of on a regular basis, and so when something doesn't come in in a timely manner, or when we ran our reports, then it doesn't show up in the numbers, so.
That's okay. I don't need to follow up on that.
But I'm not expecting any issues.
And then just another kudos on picking up on the TOT collections. I mean, I know last year, this was a big struggle, and so even though it's still a struggle, it's nice to see it's not as severe as it has been in the past, so I'm optimistic. Love the idea of getting some of that money collected by someone outside of your group. That's all I had, and I thought this was great. Again, thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I remember the question.
Sure, and I'll, right after I'm done, I'm going to recognize you again and give everyone else another shot at this. Yes, thank you very much. I think this is a perfect mid-year, you know, comparison, and where it was not right on target, you know, I appreciate the narrative, you know, getting us there. Is it pretty safe to say that this is not going to vary greatly from what we're going to see when we do the budget workshop? We're basically going to see this same framework?
Yes.
Right.
So we're working with the departments right now to help them put the budgets together. We have asked them to keep their expenditures flat where they can.
Right.
Of course, we can't control the salaries and benefits, and then we will look and see where we are based on the revenue. So we have to do those revenue projections, see where we are, get it all loaded in, and then the city manager can make some decisions from there, once we get everything loaded in. But I don't, I don't expect great increases in revenue. There might be in a few areas, but, you know, sometimes there's some offsets where things go down a little bit as well. So we're still in the figuring it out, and then we get to put the puzzle together, which is, you know, really great to be able to do and then present it to all of you.
Perfect, and I want to thank my fellow councilmembers for their questions and recognize councilmember Elwood or anyone else who'd like to ask some additional questions.
Mayor, you just asked a question that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, more questions?
I don't have a question, but I just, I'm so glad to be in Roner Park in this budget panel meeting here. It looks good. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
So I guess my question would be, if this was through the fifteenth of January and we do a budget workshop, is the only difference going to be like thirty more days of data?
So the budget workshop will be a little different. So what we do with a budget workshop, which you are going to be discussing here in a few minutes, how you would like that to go, generally, that is budget to budget, and so when you see the information, you'll have the budget from twenty-four, twenty-five, and you'll be comparing that to the budget that we're presenting in twenty-five, twenty-six, and that's generally how it's presented. The other thing that we do when we are looking at the budget right now is we're asking the departments to do a mid-year projection, and we'll be loading those into the system as well, and then I will have an idea of what we are going to look like as we close twenty-four, twenty-five, and if that presents any opportunities for the council to spend one-time money, because, you know, it's savings and, you know, it's not ongoing, then we will have those numbers available at that time, but we're still putting all of that together. But that's the hope, is that we can figure out where we are going to land for twenty-four, twenty-five, show you budget to budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, and so that decisions can be made from there.
And if I just may elaborate, Mayor, so basically, if, let me take this example of what you have in front of you here with this presentation. So if you can visualize similar type of setup where you have the various departments highlighted, you know, in this case, you see administration, finance, development service, et cetera, et cetera. So what you would see in the columns would be basically our current budget year that we're in, and then the following column would be what is being requested on the new budget, and so you would be able to see the difference. So in terms of presentation, it would mirror what you have in front of you right now, so maybe just for point of clarity.
Yeah, that was kind of my question. Perfect, and we are so lucky to have you back, and I agree with councilmember Adams. I'm glad we're in Roner Park. So thank you, thank you very much, and it looks like you don't have to go anywhere. Go ahead and do eight C. Talk about discussion and direction for the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget workshop schedule, and I hope everyone brought their calendars with them, and please, go right ahead, staff report.
Okay, so basically, what we want to do is, we want to ask council what they would like, so if you would like to have one day, if you want to do two days, you know, how much time, because that will tell me how to put together the presentation. So the more time you want to spend, the more detail we will have. So it's really what you would like to see, and we can just kind of craft it from there. So you can see kind of the next steps that we have, you know, finance is currently reviewing the budgets, city manager review, and then once all of that's put together, the intention is to bring you a somewhat modified budget book. So it's not going to have everything in it, but it is going to have the line item detail that was requested, so you will have that.
Perfect.
But like I said, it will not have all the bells and whistles and those kinds of things, but it will give you an opportunity to really dive down, but you also have the ability to look at the higher level as well, depending on what it is that you would like to be presented.
Okay. Any additional narrative from city manager's office?
Mayor, at this point, we are seeking your feedback and your guidance as a council so that we can, as our director of finance indicated, we want to make sure we bring forward to the council what the expectation is for our budget workshop, so thank you.
Perfect, and we're ready to do that, but before that, anyone from the public like to comment on that? It's a discussion item, but if there's a comment, please? Okay, I will turn to my colleagues, as Jackie would say.
Thank you. When you say it's just going to be a budget book without all the bells and whistles, like what kinds of things will not be in that presentation?
So generally, in the front of the book, we have some narrative, and we have, you know, the city council, and we have some economic information, and then towards the back of the book, we have some, like, some of our policies, and there's a glossary and things like that. So those things we will not be presenting. It's difficult for us to pull everything together, and until we know what the final budget looks like, we don't write those narratives because they are based on your final direction, and so that's, that's what it's going to be.
So, but all the numbers are in there?
All the numbers are going to be there, and.
I think that's perfectly reasonable, right?
There will be some rollups as well, so that you can, you'll be able to see the department totals, but then you'd be able to see within the department, each one of the areas, and line by line, the information. We will have fund balances available so that you'll know, you know, if we're planning to spend money, what's the beginning balance, what we think the ending balance will be. So those are kind of the guts of the budget.
So, thank you. So just to start, I would, I would support that kind of a book coming to us with no problems. I think it's. to us with no problems. I, I think it's perfectly reasonable to say, some of this we can't write until after you've made some decisions. And I quite frankly, never thought of that before, so I appreciate that. I don't know if it would take one day of a budget session or two. I'm prepared for what we used to do in, say, 2020, '21, '22, where we have staff come, make their presentation, here's what we did last year, here's what we intend to do this year, here's what we wish we could have done, whatever their goals are, and then go through their budget. We would not, we would not necessarily respond to each. I wouldn't expect, for instance, one of the directors to come up and say, listen, I really want this, but the city manager's telling me no. We're going to see the city manager's budget, right? But, but I think we need, still need to talk to the directors about how they're going to implement that. So, when you're ready for dates, I'm, I'm available to put down dates, and I think you gave us a week or two, 10-day period, time period?
So, the timeframe of what we're looking at is between April 14th and April 25th. So, if we can look at dates for those.
So, I'm available two half-days, or one long day, or into the evening. And, you know, I know we, we all have, I mean, I have a real job, just like most everybody else at this table, and I have to kind of, just like you, right?
I don't have vacations.
You don't have vacation? Well, at, at any rate, I'm prepared to go one day, or two days, two, two half-days, or one day. If we need to come over in the evening and do that, then that's fine as well. So...
Jackie, questions? Direction?
Um, yeah. So, for me, it would be hard to take like two days consecutive out of, from work, since I'm going to be taking another whole day, I think on Thursday. So, I don't know. It would be hard to bring stuff on Saturdays, but that's going to be ideal, but it's not, and I understand it. But if we can have like a whole day, one day, that will be, that'll work for me, but I don't know about everybody else, so...
And what about the book as, as described?
The book, you know, I will leave it to the discretion of staff, because I know whatever they will put in there, they already know that the numbers are what we need. But to make it simpler, it's, for me, I'm more, I'm more interested on just, just seeing what we have, and like what Councilmember Adams just said. I mean, to go into other details that they cannot project, because they don't have the final results, who will be complicated. But whatever you guys have, that's what I want to see, and that's going to be at the discretion of the city manager.
Understood. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I like how the book was described. I think it's necessary, especially to make informed decisions, and put our values, make sure that they're aligned there. I'm open to a weekend date if we need to. I think it kind of allows our constituents also an opportunity, in terms of them wanting to, if they have to sit in our questions, we're not the only ones that have jobs, or an evening. But I, I do think it'd be great. And similarly, I know for myself, I, I would like to hear from the directors a bit, right, of what they're looking at. It's great to get this overview, but sometimes you just need a little bit more of a zoom in. But it's also dense, dense info, it can be dense information. And so, to me, one full day, I'm just worried that we trickle off in the second half, right? Like, it's hard to maintain that focus. But I'm, I, I think I have probably the most flexibility out of the five of us on this day, currently. So, I'll defer to those who have stricter availability.
And before I go to the Vice Mayor, because I think that Councilmember Adams probably has some flexibility too. So, weekend and/or evening work for you as well? No, no, I mean, I think it works for you, for, for, for you, Councilmember?
Weekend will work, so that way I avoid to skip work.
I'll now turn to my Vice Mayor.
Hi. Okay. Questions I had. Okay, so the budget book, would it have narrative about, like, the, kind of the staff's narrative about, like, well, here's why, you know, we're expecting to spend more, or bring in more? Basically, like, like you just did with the staff report, is it going to be like that, where there'll be a little explanation of the changes from last fiscal year to this coming fiscal year?
So, if I may, so if you recall in our budget, what we include, which can be provided, because actually, our department heads have done a great job of including their service models, what's mandated, what are the goals. And you may recall that this last year, actually, each department at this point has provided with an update of where they have, you know, what accomplishments they have, and what goals they have for the current fiscal year. So, what you would get is, because at the end of the day, we are presenting you a, a balanced budget, so what you'll see is basically core service, well, mandated services, core services, what the accomplishments have been for the, you know, fiscal year that's ending, and then also what the goals are. So, we can provide that in, you know, the budget book, because at that point, you will be able to see what each department is requesting, and based on their, on their budget. So, you will have that information available.
The reason I was asking is, I feel like if the presentation is anything like this, like, could Betsy gather that information in advance from the staff and just present it to us?
I could do whatever you would like.
I'm just not sure. We need to bring the entire staff in, if you've already gotten that information from them, and then you're going to have them in person deliver it to us.
So, so one of the things, if I may, City Manager, is that the direction that we have given staff is that they need to have a flat budget. So, for their services and supplies, their contracts, all of those things, they're not supposed to, you know, within reason, exceed their budget from last year. So, theoretically, there shouldn't be a whole lot of explanation there.
Right.
We will walk you through the salaries and benefits, those, those they cannot control, and so finance supplies those numbers, and we will be able to explain the increases in salaries and benefits. And then beyond that, depending on what we have in the way of funds, they have a list of additional needs that the city manager will be reviewing, and to the extent that there are funds available, she will be allowing budgets to go over. But until we know how much revenue we have, it's really hard to, to predict, especially since our revenues have not been, you know, consistently growing strong since we're recovering from, from the pandemic. So, we thought it best to keep the budget flat, see how much we have, and then allow the city manager to bring forward her recommendations.
Okay. Well, my, my thought, just to put out there, is maybe we need to be there. I'm not sure if the whole staff needs to be there, in which case, we might even have more scheduling flexibility. I don't know. How, anyone else here feels about that?
I would say that we would need the staff there, at least for myself, in terms of the directors, is, because then, if there's direct questions from them, they can give us that more, kind of what I was saying, like zoomed in view.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go ahead and chime in, and then we'll, we'll take another bite at this. Just one question of you before we continue. Weekends, evenings are fine with you too? Okay. Yes. So, first of all, thank you again. And the book, yes. Weekends, yes. Evenings, yes. That's fine. If we want to do two days, that's fine too. For me, I'd like them to be truncated. I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez, that any meeting that lasts more than four or five hours, we tend, even though we have food and beverages and all that, we tend to fade. I think what we saw tonight was a perfect example of the format that I'd like to see. I've told our city manager time and time again, she's responsible for the budget, it is our budget, and I would like her to deliver it. Having said that, having staff in the room is fine with me. I thought you saw a perfect example when there was a question, and then you deferred to Director Judice to go ahead and answer that question. I think that's totally appropriate. At the end of the day, the city manager is responsible for the budget. So, I thought this format tonight was great. I'm, I'm looking forward to it. And what additional direction, oh, I'm sorry, Samantha, Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have something additional? And then Susan or Jackie?
I think, I just, I want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm asking, and the importance of our directors. I find it very different when they're there. It's great in this setting, but when it's so detailed, right, when we're having questions, why are we hiring this many people, or why are we spending on these things as they come up? It's important to have them actively engaged in it. I'm not saying that they haven't been. I'm just saying it makes a difference to allow the conversations, and make sure that we're clear when we decide what our values are, right, to help drive that. It absolutely is the city manager's budget, but she's hearing from them, so why not go kind of to the source, I guess, is where I'm coming at.
Right. So, my clarifying question to you is, would those questions go initially to the city manager, or are you looking for those questions to go directly to staff, and then the city manager can call on them as needed?
I mean, in the moment, it would be like this, right? We ask the city manager, and she'll defer, because we direct the city manager, we don't direct staff. But I also want it to be clear to the city manager, that if possible, the staff be prepared. If there's questions, like I try to do, right, I'll, on our one-on-ones, I have a question about this thing, she'll go to them and either loop them in, and I get the response. I think that's more of what I want to see. I, I was concerned on the comment of not having them there, that then that takes away from us making sure that there's clarity. And not that our city manager doesn't know, but I just think it's better to have our directors there.
So, I'm going to go here on the clarity, and then I'm going to bounce back.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for clarity, it, no matter what the format is, whether it's half-day, one day, two days, our department heads are expected, just like you see them in the audience, they're expected to be here, and obviously, they will be part of the budget presentation, in whatever shape or form, you know, we, we need them to be. Because, yes, they need to be here to provide responses, as you saw, as you have seen when we've presented the budget even in the past, is they are here available to provide clarification. And, you know, if we need to justify certain requests, absolutely, because I, I know, I am going to go through that process with them as well, when I get their respective budget. So, absolutely, they are expected to participate.
So, just...
I'm sorry, Jackie, and then Susan, I apologize.
It's okay.
I think I got it right.
It's okay. Just for clarity, so, when we will have the presentation, is that, what I'm hearing is, the department heads will not do that, those presentations? So, one of you will be doing those presentations?
So, Councilmember, that's what we're trying to determine. So, okay, so I'll use this, what just, the report that you just got, you know, this evening on our mid-year budget. As you saw, our finance director provided you with the overall budget presentation of where we are, which would work that way, right? I mean, obviously, our finance team has oversight of all our revenues. And so, she will basically provide you with the revenue presentation, expenditure presentation. What we are trying to determine, and I, and I need clarity on this, because I don't feel that I have received it, is the expectation, if we want to involve our department heads, what exactly do we want them to present? Because you will get a summary, and maybe Betsy or Elizabeth, can you go back to like the summary graphic table on revenues and expenditures, just because I'm trying to make sure that I'm clear. So, as we develop this, I guess we can use this as an example, or, is, we're going to bring to you overall what the anticipated revenues are, just like you saw the breakdown here. And here we go. So, you will get this initial presentation, obviously, from our, our finance director. That's how we're going to start off the budget workshop. And so, you're going to be able to see, what do we anticipate those amounts to be? And then the same thing with expenditures. Now, where, where the clarity is needed, is what do, what information you would like to see from department heads, whether it's, you know, their goals, their accomplishments, or, like you said, maybe services that they would like to provide, if the funding was not an issue. So, that's the clarity that, that I need, so that we know, want to, so that they can be prepared. And then, you know, we can be obviously prepared for the days, whether it's going to be one day or two days. I can tell you that if we want presentations from each one of your department heads, it's going to have to be at least two days. Because one day will be probably, you know, difficult, because then, keep in mind too, that we also need to look at the special revenues that we have, which are the enterprise funds and other funds that we have.
And, and what I, just, you know, anecdotally, I can tell you that what I've seen in a lot of cities to try to address this issue, and it is, do you want the directors to make the presentation to you, which will take longer? Or what some cities do, which most cities do, is actually, they, they get this kind of understanding from the council, what do you want to hear or know from the directors? The directors then prepare that for the budget workshop. When they prepare that, it is, it is part of the packet. You will see that. I mean, you know, I'm not saying that's what you should do, but I'm just saying that, that's most common. And then, they don't make the actual presentations at the budget workshop. What they are there for, as they are here, they're available for questions. And, and that, because if you have each department, and we've done that in Ronet Park, you know, and I've, I've seen we've done that before, those take longer. That, you, you cannot do that without, in, in one day even. And, and it's two long days. So, it, it's a question of, how much time do you, as a council, have to commit to this analysis? And do you want it streamlined at all? Because you can have all of the analysis, you can get all of your questions answered. It's just, how do you want it presented?
Right. So, would you like to finish your thought, or should I go to...
She wants me to go next.
She does?
Yes, she does.
Yes, you do?
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I, I, this group of five has never sat through a budget session together, where we had, you know, an overview by the finance person, and then one at a time, we invite the department chair, the department chairman to come up, or the director, I should say, and explain what goes on in their department. And we, we learn about what goes on in their department, and why they use the funds that they use, and the way that they use them. We all get to hear the same presentation at the same time. It would be really great if the city manager handed out a presentation and said, read this before you come to the meeting. Well, I just think that it's going to be better if we have kind of a heads-up about that, but I think two four-hour sessions would work with having, my preference is to have, I'll use the Cindy Bagley. Cindy comes up, gives a presentation about her department, takes 15 or 20 minutes if need be.
So, I don't want to cut you there, but is that goals and accomplishments?
Yeah. What, what does, what did she do, what did she do last year, what's she intending to do this year?
So, goals and accomplishments.
If the sun and moon and the stars could line up, what she would like to do, and conversely, what we might like to see differently than what we're, than what we're not seeing as a council.
Well, then we're getting into city manager.
So, if I may, that is, that kind of conversation, as far as what you would like to see, is actually going to take place on Thursday. That's why we...
Good. Okay, that's fine.
You know, that's important, because, you know, that's why we're doing that strategic workshop, when we're doing it in February, in preparation, so that if there is a certain goal, or a certain desire that the council has, then we have to figure out, okay, if that's the direction we're going to go, then what are we not going to be able to do? Because now, we're shifting direction. So, that's why we're doing that. Yes, there's obviously comments that are going to be made, you know, when, as we are preparing the budget, but that's why we're doing the strategic planning on Thursday, to be able to get that feedback in advance, to allow staff to be able to reprioritize. And so, just so that, you know, we're clear. So, I know that last year, we had each department present the very information that we have. Is that what you have in mind? Because if I remember correctly, in most cases, you know, we took like maybe 15 minutes at the most by each department. They talked about, you know, their goals, accomplishments. The only thing that was not included was what they would like to do, maybe that, you know, wasn't included as part of the budget. So, we have that, because we have, we did that last year. Each department came to council and presented that. So, if that is kind of what you, the information you're looking for, then I, I think we'll work with that, because they, they have that information already. And it's going to be included in the budget book as part of, you know, the information that's going to be provided to you. But if that's the presentation you want from directors, then it's, it's feasible. We can do that.
Okay. And so, going back to...
That is, that is the kind of presentation that I'm looking for, and I think it will be much more, you know, it'd be one thing to have somebody give us the numbers, but then when we get the director to stand up and kind of start fleshing it out. And it's, it's different during a budget session than it is coming to a city council meeting, giving 15 minutes, then going off, right? So, that's, that's what I'm looking for, what, what they, that they've done, and then let's put some numbers on it.
So, Councilmember, I would need further clarity from you.
Um, well, I would love to see the department head, but my, my only question would be, so, if they come and talk to us, but at the end of the day, you will have the final decision. Is that correct? When it comes to budgeting and moving things around?
So, maybe ultimately, at the end of the day, really, the decision's up to council? So maybe ultimately, at the end of the day, really, the decision is up to council? If three of you say, you know what, this is not the budget we want to see, city manager, then we would have to obviously pivot. At the end of the day, you're adopting the budget. The city manager brings you the recommended budget based on revenues, expenditures. So it's a recommendation that I'm giving you as a city manager based on, you know, my meetings with department heads and of course, finance. Because a lot of it is gonna be dependent on our fiscal reality. And as our director of finance pointed out to you, right now, because of the direction we're seeing with our revenue, we are asking all departments to remain flat. So you're gonna see something very, very similar to what you have here, that what you received this evening is very gonna be very similar to what the current budget that we're in right now.
Yeah. So in that case, I wouldn't mind to hear what our department had have accomplished and what not, just in a goal and accomplishment. And the rest to hear from the city manager if that make more sense.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, please.
I think that's a number three, agreeing with Councilmember Elward and Councilmember Adams. I think it, at least for me, it helps me formulate my questions. I can't formulate questions if I don't have information prior to. So it's very helpful to know what are things that they would like to see. They're the experts in their department. So I'd like to hear those kinds of things or what they might say, hey, we usually want to spend on this, but we found this other way. And I would like to see, you know, maybe someone decides they want to donate all this money to City of Roner Park. What would be their dream to use that money for, right? So I'm in agreement with my colleagues here.
So there's a little bit of a, is there a little bit of a difference here in this nuance? Are you getting enough direction here?
So I, like I said, I just want to make sure that we meet expectations as far as,
I understand that.
You know, the what information so that our department head team can prepare as well as far as what is being expected of them when they come before the council.
Right. But from a couple of my council members, I'm hearing goals and accomplishments. But from another one of my council members, I'm hearing they want to take it a step further and actually engage more directly as to fleshing things out and what would they do differently and this kind of thing. Yeah, but that's, there's a difference here.
That is correct. There, so I'm trying again to get clarity.
I'm trying to get this out.
So here's how it would look. We'd call Director Bagley up. It would be her turn. Tell us about your department. What did you accomplish last year? What are your goals for this year? We'd have some questions that we could ask her and engage on. We could talk about the budget. If we had any direct numbers questions, we'd go back to the city manager. But we would engage the directors as a council. I'm not sure what difference, did I say something different?
I'm not sure what difference there is. I thought I clearly stated I am in agreement with Councilmember Elward, who said she was in agreement with Councilmember Adams. So that was three people in agreement on what Councilmember Adams is saying.
We're missing something here.
So it's the content. So basically, I just want to, so it's accomplishments for fiscal year 2024, '25 that you would like to listen from department heads. And then also what their goals are for '25, '26. And then what services perhaps they would like to offer that, you know, maybe did not get included in the budget or are not being recommended? Is that the information?
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah. Right?
Yeah. I mean, that the information, I mean, at the end of the day, the decision you will bring back to us the information based on what they will bring to you, isn't it? Isn't it clear? I mean.
No, it's clear now. That's why I wanted to make sure that, you know, that that was.
Sorry, I didn't want to push that.
No, because we circle back, we will circle back to you evidently, but just to hear from them will be a way too for us to connect with them. But at the end of the day, they come back to you. Does that make sense?
I just, what I'm hearing is that, and just to get clarity, and not that I need it that much, but I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that I understand what the direction is of the council. Because what I'm hearing is goals and accomplishments as well as.
Aspirations.
Aspirations of what they have previously discussed with the manager, but the manager has decided is not appropriate for the budget? Is that, so you're asking for another level of.
Well, you're taking a deeper dive here.
That they probably may not have, you want them to create that, right? What if it isn't created yet? Because that's a question that your department heads are going to be asking the manager. Do you want us to create an aspirational list? And so what, when you're looking for this list of, you know, what you would like that isn't currently in the budget, how do you want, do you want them to create that? Do you want them to just base it on what they have asked for and was not accepted? I think the department heads and the manager would like that. And I would too, just because I need to make sure I understand if I get asked questions, what was the direction? I'm not sure what the direction is. So I think the manager.
I'm gonna try to make it as simple, maybe as a first grader can understand it. So you're giving them $50 for, as a flat fee for everybody. So everybody will come and say, this is what we worked on. This is what we are hoping to do based on the money that we have. And then the city manager, right, at the end, you know, during the budget, the last word will come from her evidently to propose to us. But we want to hear at least from the department.
Actually, we'll go ahead and let Marcella respond, and then we'll go back to.
So Councilmember, I understand, so in your scenario that you just described, basically, it is what currently, obviously, our departments have worked. I think the other layer, and this is why I was asking for clarity, is, as the mayor pointed out, is there's also an aspiration list, I guess, of items that's being requested that the departments would have to come up with. I'm sure they would. I'm sure they would. But it seems that we're adding that additional layer to this presentation by each department. And so it seems to me that's what, you know, I'm understanding, at least from, I guess, two or three of you. So I think that's the clarity so that we know our department heads are prepared when they come before you. And, you know, just trying to meet expectations.
You know what? I appreciate your making, you know, there's an old saying, don't tell them so they understand, tell them so they can't possibly misunderstand, right? Good job. I'm for the goals and the what they accomplished last year and what they anticipate accomplishing this year. I think the aspiration is something we can kind of set aside because you're right. If they've come to you and said, hey, I want to do this, and you're saying, we don't have the money for that, right? And I don't, I mean, if somebody drops, you know, a lot of money here that we're not expecting, well, we can come back and visit that. But I'm okay if we talk about their accomplishments and their goals for the future.
Okay.
That's one.
Thank you. Councilmember? Okay. Councilmember?
I'm gonna be really honest, all I heard back was, we don't want to. So if you don't want to do the aspirations list, whether it's normal for any other city or not, it's, that's a little frustrating to hear. Doesn't mean that we, I'm not, I wasn't viewing that as an intention to then say, city manager's wrong, we're gonna do this. It's how do we keep that in mind? Or at least myself as a council member, how do I know, hey, that like could be something in the future that I can ask other legislators for, or we can see grants are for, or we, how am I gonna know what our department heads, our experts here want for our city if they can't just give us a wish list? Doesn't mean it's going to happen. It doesn't mean that we're directing them because we don't. We direct the city manager. But if doing a list is too much for the team, then I'll agree with Councilmember Adams. But I just feel like this got way more complicated than what it really was. I felt like we were pretty clear a while back, so.
And so, and Councilmember Rodriguez, it's not that we're saying no. I guess what is just clarification because, you know, I'm getting, I just want to make sure that we meet the expectations and because that is gonna determine how long this workshop is gonna take. And so that's the only reason. We can come up with it. Absolutely, we can. And I'm sure on Thursday, we'll come up with a list of many aspirations. That is not the issue. We can come up with that. I just want to make sure that we understand that what you're asking for, that we end up delivering. And that's why we have the item before you, is that we understand what you expect each of our department heads to present to you.
So what you're saying is if three of us ask you to do that, that will be no problem for you. You just need to know what that is.
That is correct. It's just, I just need to understand, or we just need to understand what the direction is.
Let me recognize the vice mayor before she elbows me.
Maybe the missing piece of information is just what level of detail is the wish list? I mean, I don't think that what you're looking for is like dollar for dollar. If I had a million, I'd do this. I think you're just like, hey, if I had extra money in public works, I'd replace that wall on Southwest, I'd do this and I'd do that. That's what you're looking for?
Yeah, exactly.
So they probably would have done that anyway, but that seems simple. It's not like we're trying to create more work for them. It's just like, you know, wish list. Very, very top level.
And I.
Like bulletized.
Did that get us to, oh, I'm sorry. I think Jackie.
I have to agree. It was not about the dollar amount, but at least to have an idea what, because a lot of times when we talk to legislators, they ask question of, oh, so what you guys are thinking about? In that mindset, and I know that the department heads will understand that that is not to get to give the money, but it's just to get the information. And because we go sometime lobbying in Sacramento, and that would be a great opportunity to get this conversation going in order to bring that back here, not to give you guys more digging to go into. Is it clear enough?
And I have to apologize to my colleagues. I just wanted to get that level of detail because I don't want, you know, we've discussed this over a couple of years, right? So I want to make sure that we've given absolute clarity to the city manager so that she, as she says, she can deliver what we expect, what the expectation is. So do you have that direction now, or do I need to dig deeper?
I believe so. And I believe that we have three members of the council that are asking for that information. So we'll make sure that our department heads, you know, put together that list.
Thank you. If I may. Oh, wait a minute. We're gonna, I'm sorry. Did I not even recognize you?
I'm just waiting until we're ready.
Okay. We'll go Councilmember Adams, and then we'll go, I'm sorry, I didn't know if your light was on before.
I really appreciate the city manager pointing out the fact that on Thursday, we're gonna have an extended discussion about some of these things. So we may have something that we wish for that staff is currently not doing or interested in doing. And I'll leave that for Thursday. But yes, thank you.
And Director House?
So I totally appreciate the clarity on that, and I do believe that we have some good direction. But one thing I just want to be clear on is the level of detail that you want in the presentation slides. So is this overview by department enough? Or do you need more information on each individual department as each department is presenting?
I thought I asked that question before, and I enjoy this format, but, okay, once again, let's go.
So if you go back to the budget book of, the first budget book I ever saw in 2019 and 2020, there's a list, it comes with the book. Here's a list of everything that they do, right? I mean, just take the one from five or six years ago and slap it in front of there.
Okay.
Yes, it's gonna be in the book.
Exactly. That's all I'm looking for is what she's already talking about putting in there.
It is gonna be in the book. I just want to know what to prepare in the way of slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any last words?
Thank you.
I tried. You're welcome. Okay. Let's go ahead and, thank you, Betsy. Thank you very.
Do we have a date?
Oh, no. That's right. If you want to get married, you gotta pick a date. Please. When suggested dates? Who's running this deal?
It's up to you.
Okay, let's look at April. Let's look at the third week in April.
So the only date that the council chambers is not available is April 17. And what I would suggest is that we don't do this on a weekend. I want to be respectful of our department heads' time. So if we can pick two weekdays, and again, given the format that was just provided, I would ask for two days.
Okay, so we're gonna do two days because that's what we asked for. And let's go ahead and get our calendars open. And you said the only one is the 17?
Yes, that is correct. Our chambers is not available on the 17.
Okay, so can we say, and we've got council 14th, can we say 22, 23? Yeah. Yeah, I didn't want to do it right next to the council. 22, 23?
Is that in April?
Correct.
And that's gonna be in evening?
No, that's gonna be during the day.
I can't do that.
Okay.
22nd, we have a council meeting.
No, that's Monday.
Yes, we do.
Oh, it is. 22nd, we have a council meeting. I'm sorry.
The evening, what time in the evening?
15, 16?
When are you available?
So I will be, so if we're gonna do the evening, four o'clock will be best for me because I finish work at three.
Does evening work for the staff?
Which day are you looking at for evening?
15, 16.
I'm available both of those.
Okay.
15, 16. Yeah.
Okay.
So 15, 16, starting at four?
Okay. Jackie?
Yeah.
Emily? Sold.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I would say four hours at least, at least each evening?
Yeah, 48.
I apologize. On the 16th, can you possibly start earlier? If usually Wednesdays are short days at schools.
Yes.
Is that a little bit better for the staff as well? Maybe if we do like a two to six?
Which day is that?
The 16th, Wednesday.
Okay, so 16th, two to six, does that work for you?
I would do three because I finish at 2:45.
Three to seven on the 16th and the 15th, 48.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very, very much.
Should we have alternates in the case we find out later, something comes up and those dates, times don't work? Or just leave it as?
I think we leave it as.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Betsy. Thank you very, very much. And thank you, everyone here, for your patience and your direction. Let's go ahead. 8D, consider approving an updated park and facility use and reservation policy superseding Resolution 2022-114 and authorize city manager or designee to execute non-exclusive use license agreements with organizations using Roner Park City facilities and fields for youth and adult athletic programs. And we welcome Director Bagley, whose ears must have been burning because we mentioned you so much.
That's great. All right. Thank you, City Council. That was a mouthful of a title. But to sum it up, we are here today to bring forth some updates to our park and facility use and reservation policy, which has previously been adopted by council. So this is just amendments to that policy. And then asking for city council to give the city manager authority to enter into use agreements with our youth and adult sports organizations who use city sports fields under certain criteria. with our youth and adult sports organizations who use city sports fields under certain criteria. Sorry, didn't have my remote here. So again, this is our purpose, and really the target for this agreement and the updates to our policy are around our youth and adult sports organizations that use city fields for an extended period of time. So just to start off, as a little background, the city has a very long history of partnering with our youth sports organizations and adult sports organizations to use city fields. If you aren't aware, the city of Rona Park does not offer youth sports leagues through our department. Instead, we have nonprofits within the city who do that service for our residents. We do maintain the fields right now, and how it's been working in history is that our sports field users have been renting our fields in the same manner that someone that would want to do a birthday party would rent the fields in essence. And that really only covers the use of the field during the hours in which they need it. It lacks anything that reference uses of our concession stands, storage boxes, additional amenities, if they need portable restrooms. None of that has been memorialized, yet most of our user groups do use many of those amenities. So really, we are trying to make sure that we are putting all of the stuff that they are doing currently in writing, in case all of us leave tomorrow and new people come in, they know what has been agreed upon with these user groups. That has been probably our biggest challenge, not having these things in writing, is not only does city staff turn over, but also the boards within these leagues turn over. So we get new presidents, new secretaries, new treasurers, new maintenance folks, who don't know what the previous board agreed to with the city in a verbal agreement. So again, this is really to benefit both the city and the users, so that everything is in writing and everybody knows who's doing what, who's on first, if you will. No pun intended. There you go. Oops, sorry, let me go back. Right now, our Public Works Department, based on the capacity of staffing and budget, has the ability and is committed to maintaining all of our sports fields at a recreational play level. That means that any resident coming out to the field could play a recreational activity out there. Most of our sports organizations prefer to have the fields maintained at a competitive level. Sometimes that means the grass is mowed a little bit shorter. You know, the infield dirt is filled in a little bit better than we would expect for recreational play. In the past, many of our youth sports organizations have donated their time, their money, to maintain the fields to the levels that they need for their play. However, again, none of that has been done in writing. And so there's no controls on the city's side for what's actually being done out there, what equipment they're using. We really want to just make sure that everybody's communicating with one another. Nothing that we're trying to do today is to prevent our organizations from being able to do that work. We just want to make sure that that's run through the proper channels, that our public works teams has seen it, has approved it. And so that is where we're gonna trigger in this separate agreement. So we've done a lot of background communicating with our user groups. Again, we wanted to make sure we didn't just bring this to council and didn't communicate with the people who are most affected by this. So we've done office hours in November and December and invited all youth and adult sports organizations that would be impacted by this new agreement to attend. Cal Ripken and Girl Softball both attended the in-person meetings. We brought this to the Parks and Recreation Commission on December 2nd. We invited all the user groups to be able to attend that meeting if they would like. No one showed up in person, although we did hear that some were listening on their computers or TVs. We hosted a user group meeting on December 10th, and attendees were Cal Ripken, Lacrosse, and Girl Softball. And then we sent basically what you see here, the draft of the proposed agreement and all of the policy changes to all user groups on January 24th, asked for responses if they saw any red flags or anything that we put in there that they were unaware of. By January 29th, we did not get any responses, confirmation or otherwise. So we feel we did our diligence in working with the groups. I also want to give a shout out to my team, who did all of this while I was out on leave. So thank you for carrying the ship on that. So that brings us to the first thing that we need from council, and that is to approve some amendments to our parks and facility use and reservation policy. This policy was originally adopted from zero to something in 2019. We have brought it back once with some updates, so we're just bringing it back again to again memorialize some of the things that the user groups have already been doing. Here's, and I do want to make sure we point that out. Many of the things that we're putting in here are things that are already happening. We are just trying to put it in writing, so it's all in one place, and that the council has approved of it. So some of the things that you see in your packet, and I have highlighted all of the changes that are in the policy for you, so you don't have to read every single word. Right now, as you go to some of our sports fields, you'll see banners, firm sponsors. We don't want to prohibit our user groups from being able to get sponsorship, but right now, there is no permission to hang those banners on our fences. We want to be able to give them that permission through this policy and agreement. Clarification on how we will schedule allocation of fields, based on what type of user you are, what season you're in. We already have that in the policy. We just added some clarifying language. Our refund policy, our insurance requirements, we want to make sure that all of our youth sports organizations have the SAM insurance, which is the sexual abuse and molestation insurance. That has not previously been written into the policies before, so we added that. What we require if they need to adjust their reservation times, key access. We have given users access via keys, but didn't have a very good, clear way to do that. Field maintenance and usage, what you can do without going into agreement. Here's some basic things you're allowed to do. You can drag the fields, you can water the fields, you can hand pull weeds. If you want to do anything more than just standard maintenance, that's gonna trigger this agreement. Trash disposal and cleanup, field closures, what will happen if you are on the fields when they're supposed to be closed, when dogs are allowed to be on our sports fields, any equipment that you absolutely cannot have out on our fields. We have added that we would like all user groups to come to a mandatory user group meeting. We've made this very optional in the past. At this point, we are making it mandatory. There's enough people on their boards that someone can come to a mandatory meeting, so we can lay out all of the expectations for the season ahead, field closures, rain delays, et cetera. We have laid out that they were required to give us their participant lists if they qualify for the per-player-per-season fee. We have been doing that. The user groups have been complying with that. We just want to have it in writing. That's the requirement. And then our field light fees. So those are all the things that we have updated. I can take questions at the end if you have any more specific questions about any of these things. Actually, if you want, Mayor, through you, we could stop at this part and ask questions about the policy piece and then move into the agreement, or I can do the agreement next. It's up to you.
We can do the agreement next unless there are specific questions.
I have a lot of questions, but you keep going.
Great. So a non-exclusive use agreement is an agreement between the cities and the sports organizations that would be required when they request specific amenities or accommodations. So what would trigger the need for a youth or adult sports organization to enter into this agreement is if they meet any one of the following things. They're requesting more than 28 days in a single season. If the user is a youth sports organization and qualifies for a per-player-per-season fee. User requests the use of a city storage shed or a concession stand. User wishes to place any kind of temporary storage shed on city property, or the user wishes to perform any maintenance on the city fields that's not already permitted in the policy that we just referenced before. So if a user group needs or wants to do any of these things, they would need to go into this separate agreement, which is more than just a standard field rental. We feel there's a lot of benefits to this. I've already sort of alluded to most of them in that this is really just a way to memorialize things that I've already been doing and making sure there's a clear line of communication, and everybody knows who's doing what, and who's agreed to what, and how, and why. It provides consistencies for our user groups. It provides consistency for staff. It reinforces what we expect of our field users, what we expect in regards to the public access to those field spaces. It really has very minimal impact to anybody, other than just this initial getting the new application and getting the agreement signed. Outside of that, how they function in their normal seasons will not look different. It limits unapproved activities and usages. It allows users to maintain the fields at their desired levels and having permission from Public Works. So that's a very high level of the agreement. Really, the bulk of the changes are referenced in the policy. The policy then would trigger whether or not someone needs to go into this use agreement. So what we're asking for tonight is that you adopt a resolution approving the updates to the parks and facility use and reservation policy, and then also authorize the city manager or her designee to be able to execute these agreements with our youth sports organizations and adult organizations if they meet the criteria.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this? Please, come forward, sir, and give us your name and tell us who you are. You've waited patiently all night for this moment.
No worries. Good evening. My name is David Langdale. I'm the president of Cal Ripken Baseball. So first, I want to thank you, Mayor, and council members, city manager as well. So I probably stood at this podium, I think it's right at seven months ago, when we had our first discussion about the snack shack at Bee Park that was vandalized and caught on fire. I've had numerous conversations and a lot of email feeds going back and forth, going back to when Councilmember Adams was a mayor at the time, and we spoke. Samantha Rodriguez as well, as a mayor. And then I haven't quite spoke with the city manager, Marcela, but I know we've been in emails, seeing each other's emails a lot. Cindy Bagley as well, I want to thank you for your time, as well as Vanessa Garrett and Tiara and Chris Morgan, and I know I'm forgetting Samantha. That's not here tonight, right? No. Amanda, sorry, not Samantha, Amanda. But with that said, there is a couple of things I would like to be considered. I understand this agreement is going into place, which I do agree with. I'm not disagreeing with the agreement. I think it's necessary. I've been in the league for 12 years, and I've been the president. This will be my second year. It has always been a handshake agreement, is what it seems to be over the years. So yes, you have numerous boards that change hands, and there's not a lot of communication between, you know, the current president going out or anything, you know, in that sense. So there is no communication that's been had between the city, other than, oh, no, you just get this field. You just go and this is what you do. So with that said, I think it's a great thing that we're putting in place. I do have my reservations and my concerns on certain things. And I'm only gonna speak on behalf of Cal Ripken Baseball for the baseball fields that we use. And I understand there's gonna be a side discussion when we go into user agreement for sub-agreements, for things that we're more responsible to take care of. I know there's been conversations with the staff as well, and unfortunately, I understand your guys' limitations to your Public Works Department and being able to come out and keep those fields maintained, that yes, at the level that we're hoping that they are. We do host state and regional tournaments in the city. Unfortunately, due to the vandalism and the situation that happened, as well as the scoreboard now no longer functioning, we were canceled this year for both state and regional tournament. Again, I have frustration that it's been seven months, and I'm standing here and the same answer I'm getting is that we are still working with our insurance on a design and a budget. It seems very long, and I understand things don't move very fastly. My insurance claim is done, and we've been paid, and it's sitting in a savings account, waiting to replenish our items. There is some things, I think, that need clarity, as far as the current snack shacks and how they've been operated, is the city owns the buil- I apologize. The city owns the building, right, and Cal Ripken owns everything inside of it. The same goes for like the containers, you know, those are Cal Ripken's, everything in those, as far as the mowers and everything that we spend money on and are there. And I know, speaking with previous board members and presidents, that those containers were placed based on where the city told us to put them. So I understand there's another container on another field with soccer or something that's in the wrong spot on a water main. But I just want to say that I really have been trying to communicate well with your staff. I appreciate you guys. I know it's not easy. Councilmembers, I appreciate you guys hearing me, Susan, specifically Adam, sorry, council member, and working with us. I just wish it would have been done yesterday. That's all I can say, right? The one thing I would like council member, and you guys are getting ready to go into a budget meeting, to consider, and it's been brought up, we are renting these fields from the city. We're paying fees. We're paying light fees. And we are a nonprofit, and so, you know, our money has to go back into the league. And so we're spending on average about 40-plus, potentially $1,000 a year on the city fields, to improve the city fields between backstops, dirt, chalk, equipment, field fencing, et cetera, snack shack updates. You know, so there is a lot that goes into improving the city facilities, and I know that was considered, you know, in paying additional fees for light fees and things like that. So I just hope that's considered when we start talking about our agreements and the amount of money we're putting in to improve the city fields. So I appreciate you guys. I thank you. Thank you all for what you do and working with our organization, and I hope to continue a healthy relationship.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you would like to chime in, please?
Yes, please. Thank you. And I totally agree that we wish we would be able to move these projects faster than what they're normally are, but I would like to say that I know our staff has been obviously speaking, and I know that it was acknowledged. And we did provide alternatives, you know, to the group to be able to host the tournaments. It's unfortunate that they canceled, but there was alternatives that could have accommodated that tournament. So I just wanted to make sure that- Basically, I'm not quite sure the reasons why they canceled the tournament, but, you know, I knew that part of the concern was the snack bar, but there was alternatives being provided. And maybe Ms. Garrett can come up and share what those alternatives were. I wanted to make sure that we corrected that, that there was alternatives provided for the possible hosting of the tournament. So, and I know that staff will continue meeting with the group to make sure that we move that project along. Just like with any other priority, there's, you know, an extensive capital improvement program, and, you know, staff makes choices what we advance first. Obviously, in this case, we were waiting for the insurance company to be able to do the necessary inspections and reviews to be able to provide any kind of reimbursement to the city, so that process does take time. So Ms. Garrett, please.
Sure. Sure. What's we understood, kind of the needs for the concession stand? It's based off of a permit that Cal Ripken gets with the County Department of Health Services for temporary food concessions. I went ahead and called them and just asked, can you accommodate some temporary stuff? You know, a four-sided EZ Up to those with a pass-through window actually meets the health permit requirements. Either refrigerator that we can hook into, you know, electrical for the season or something like that, along with some other temporary things. The health department was really accommodating. So they are allowing us to just, or they're allowing Cal Ripken to just operate with those temporary things until we can rebuild the concession stand. So that, at least as far as the permitted food vending, it wasn't going to be a hindrance. And then the other thing that we've talked about in December was a scoreboard. So since learning about that, you know, if that's the only other hindrance, we can work towards getting electrical connected for the scoreboard. But that's what we've heard for needs to keep the concession stands operating.
Thank you. Are there any other additional public comments? Okay.
Please, let him. He has a comment.
What's that?
Can he make a clarifying comment?
Yeah, no worries. I'm getting there.
I just wanted to let you know, it wasn't Cal Ripken that canceled it. It was the state board and the regional commissioner. They denied our application just due to the level of tournament that's expected to have a full operating snack shack, and I appreciate the offer.
Thank you for the clarification.
About temporary stuff, but it was the state and regional is why.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we go on, or do we need to take a- We can go on? Good. Okay, let's go ahead and- Questions, comments from our council members, or a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we, and then followed by discussion, right?
We will discuss.
Right language here. I'll make a motion that we consider approving the updated park and facility use and reservation policy superseding Resolution 2022-114 and authorize the city manager or designee to execute non-exclusive use license agreements with organizations using Rona Park City facilities and fields for youth and adult athletic programs.
Okay, let's have our discussion, please.
Do you need a second?
Do you have a discussion?
I'll second. I'll second that motion, and now, so we can discuss.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So I'm really pleased that while you were welcoming a new life into the world, your staff was, appeared to be working very diligently here. So thank you very much, Tiara, for that. When you talk about maintaining the fields to a recreational level, you're talking about my group is gonna go play baseball at the park, and we just go out there and play. It's not ready for anybody to have a tournament or anything, right? You're just-
Correct.
Field's there. Do you keep track of, this is gonna go out in just a tiny bit, but do you keep track of when people call and say, hey, listen, Jackie and I had a group out there playing softball, and she broke her foot on the field running because it was uneven? Do we ever keep track of those kinds of things? Do people turn that information into you?
That would be a better question for the Director of Human Resources, who receives claims against the city for things that happen like that. I haven't heard those.
Thank you. I got my answer. All right, so I appreciate David Langdale being here and his patience during this process. It's very difficult. I'm in the insurance business. I know these things take a long time. Big ships don't turn on a dime. And when you add insurance to government, well, there you go. But if I'm one of those people who hasn't come in to see you, and I compliment your reaching out to everybody, making it, you know, if somebody comes and says, how could you have passed this? We didn't get a chance to look at it. Yes, you did, right? But what's gonna surprise me the most?
Honestly, I don't, I don't think anything would be a surprise to a brand-new per- Do you mean like a user group who's always been with us?
Uh huh, yes.
Well, just that they have to sign an agreement-
Okay.
That has all of this legalese language in it, when in the past, they've filled out an application, they pay us money, we give them a permit. They still have language on that, but it's minimal in comparison to this. You know, an agreement looks more intimidating than what they currently are signing.
Well, because you say we're not, we're gonna have minimal impact on our teams here, but it's 88 pages of minimal impacts. So it looks, it looks a lot more intimidating, I think, than it is once you've read through it. It's like, well, that makes sense. Why weren't we doing that before?
Yeah.
At one of your slides, you said something about a shed. Can you go back, because it wasn't numbered, please? It said, oh, there it was. Nope, there you go. The following, users meet any of the following criteria. Number three, users request the use of any city storage shed or concession stand. Let's use Mr. Langdale for an example. All his sheds out there belong to him. Is that correct?
Yes, so this is, this is going to be for future- Yeah, so this is, this is going to be for future forward. We do have some organizations that have storage sheds out there. My understanding from our public works team is that we are not gonna approve any permanent storage containers be placed on any city fields moving forward, that this agreement will allow youth or adult sports organizations to place temporary storage sheds at the fields for their seasons that would need to be removed after the season is over. So this is not to say that we're gonna go to Cal Ripken and say you have to remove all your sheds. I, I believe that they're already there. Those are sort of grandfathered in, if you will. Any, any new requests for storage? For example, I know that we have one organization that does need a storage shed at one of our parks. We asked them to wait until this agreement was settled and that will be approved. They will be able to put a temporary storage shed at that space for their duration of their season in which time they will have to remove.
So one sports league is gonna be affected by this that I know of, because I've had some phone calls already. One sports league and we're gonna make them put the thing up and then take it down at the end of the season.
We haven't, uh-
You've got a, uh, someone in your ear there.
Do you mind if I just clarify? Um, sure. And we appreciate so much, like, people bringing their own mowers, mowing the fields, right, dragging the fields. We understand that equipment does need to go somewhere. So if there's people that would love, you know, sports agencies that would love to do that for any other park, you know, like Cal Ripken does, as part of that operating agreement that we're gonna work through for the more permanent maintenance, we can talk about where to store that equipment.
Okay.
Because I do understand they have like ride-on mowers.
Now, right? They're the ones who have been waiting. They said, oh-
I'm not sure who, but anybody, right? Anybody that, um, would love to, you know, like, improve our fields to a higher standard than recreational. We could negotiate where to put, it's for storing their equipment.
Right, for an extended period of time. So he doesn't need to necessarily listen to this meeting and say, I'm gonna put a little thing here and now they're gonna make me go find another place to put it.
If it's for, yeah, maintenance equipment, we could see if there's something on site that we could put it in, right? Sometimes there's storage areas on site, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a really quick on-
Councilmember Rodriguez wants a clarifying question.
About that specifically before you go on to the rest. Um, so what, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that most of them will be grandfathered in and any futures, it'd probably be best that we make sure that they're talking to the staff that are implementing this, right? It's great that they call us, but again, staff are the experts on this to be able to do that because you probably have more answers for them than we would. Um, correct? So, so if I started a, I don't know, whatever league, right? And I needed that, it'd be best to go to your departments and discuss that permit.
Yeah, so the way that we would envision, if, if you're a brand-new, you sports organization, you're a nonprofit, you are gonna use it for more than twenty-eight days. You have user, buy-user fees and you wanna come to us and say, how do I do this? You'd start with the community services department. We would provide you an application that's gonna ask you all the questions so we can get the answers to these things. Some of those things will trigger the need for us to move you from community services to public works. Maintenance, for example, large equipment usage in the fields. And then Vanessa's team and my team will work together to draft the user agreement and make sure that all the things that we agreed upon are shown in that, in the attachment. So the, the bones of the agreement stay the same for every organization. It's the exhibit that's attached to the agreement that will look different for every organization based on their needs and based on what the two departments are able to coordinate for their use.
And who do we send them to first?
And then-
Hang on.
And then in terms of, um, the, the permanent structures, like you're saying, right? Like, the sheds, the containers that are there are permanent because they're just there twenty-four-seven, not permanent because they're bolted and built up. So we're talking about, because that brings other liabilities to the city when we build them, maintain them and make them that type of permanent. But that doesn't mean that there's not a chance for storage or some sort of permanent storage for these leagues, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you done with your questions?
Almost.
Okay, so hang on, just a point of clarity, uh, from the protocols for decorum. While the council is in session, council members will preserve order and decorum and a member will neither by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the council nor disturb a member while speaking or refuse to obey the orders of the preceding officers. So I just wanna clarify that and please go ahead and continue.
Did I do something wrong?
Yes.
I did. Well, tell me what that is.
You interrupted the chair and you interrupted-
Oh, I apologize. I, I felt kinda interrupted because he started speaking in the middle of my thing. So that's nothing personal, but-
She asked if she could participate and she went through the chair and I clarified that and recognized her. Please continue.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Okay, so, um, who would we send them back to first? You or Public Works or Community Services?
They need to start with Community Services because we have the application that will ask the questions about the things that they are likely gonna need to get answers from Public Works. It would start with us, with recreation, at the community center.
Perfect, thank you. So, uh, David also said something about, um, we pay the park fees, the light fees and the, all that other kinda stuff. I think it would be helpful for him and everybody else to know that this is how much it costs to run the lights while you're out there playing. And this is how much it costs to keep that grass from really getting out of hand before you mow it. Because it, it could seem usurious to them when it's really not. Those, that's what it costs us to maintain the field, right?
Yes.
So, um, you know, if he's spending forty thousand dollars a year to make everything nice to, so that he could have a great tournament there, I totally get that. But I think we need to explain what is the cost. I mean, why are you charging that much? I don't know, but, and I appreciate that because I did send them to you and they called back to say, everything's fine, you know, we're working on it, we're working through it with them. So I appreciate that, your response. And then, um, I guess my last question is, what is your, your, if, let's say we pass this tonight, how long before you'll be meeting with these groups to say, sign here before you use the fields next?
I am very hopeful that we will be able to get a new application out to girls softball, for example, tomorrow so that they can move on getting the things they need for their season. So if, if approved tonight, we will move as quickly as we possibly can to get everybody into the new agreements that are affected by the things that were adopted tonight in this season.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Elwood.
Um, thank you, um, mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation and I can see all the frustration, but I, I am glad that you guys are putting this in place so everybody knows the rules and why not, why certain groups have their staff permanent and why the new ones will not necessarily have it permanent. I don't have that many questions. Um, for me, as long as the kids are happy on the field and everything is taken care of, that's what I care about. And I'm so sad that this year we won't have our tournament. But again, um, if we can do whatever we can to make it happen so that the next season that come, they do have their tournament, that's all I'm looking for. So the kids are happy. It's always nice to see their little face out there and all the work that they put to really play. So that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with this. Um, and I appreciate the cleanup because it is necessary. What, what a exposure to the city without it, um, and, and to our partner agencies. I agree. Is there a way, I don't know if this would be for you or for Madam City Manager, I think her city attorney stepped out. Um, but it's so unfortunate to hear, and again, especially for District One and B Park, right? It's that tournament, the tournaments bring in so many folks and each year for the past two and a half years, I have heard from folks while they're here. It's in the summer, they're staying at our hotels, they're spending at our restaurants, they're filling up their gas here, they're going to Cal skate and, and Scandia with brothers and sisters and at the pools and between the games. Is there a way if, um, I mean, God forbid, you know, something like that were to happen to any of the leagues on any of our fields? Excuse me, like the snack shack, uh, vandalization that we can, or, or that these leagues can come to us so that we can maybe help write like a letter of support when, when their boards, regionally, statewide are deciding these things of, I mean, not only, I have friends that like, just, they just go annually because it's fun, it's fun to watch the kids, it's fun to just remember when you were younger playing. Um, what, what kind of resources are available for leagues or for them to know, maybe they didn't know that they could reach out and we could help partner or figure out a way because that's, the revenue loss alone is, is, I'm pretty sure we'll feel that, um, at some point. But it, it just, the way it brings the community together is incredible, that, that impact as well. So is there something that leagues could do when they find themselves in this situation that they're being denied hosting, you know, a tournament because of a concession stand or, I don't know, the, yeah, whatever, whatever it is. Um, i- is there something that they could do that, that?
I, I mean, I guess I would ask, David, would something like that be helpful? Do they accept letters of support from the cities? And in this situation, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the letter would have said because we still don't have a concession stand. Um, we could have, I guess, shared that we are looking at temporary options for something like that, but I don't know if that would have been helpful. So I, I would defer to the expert on filling out those applications. I don't know. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so no, unfortunately, that, that, you know, is a requirement, um, as when you're filing out the application is to have a full active snack shack. We also do have onsite vendors, so we tried to do something. Um, and I just wanna clarify real quick, a little bit earlier. It was, it's the state and the regionals that make that decision. It's not us as Rona Park Cal Ripken Baseball. And we, uh, Vanessa has been great in working with us on a temporary solution for our spring season. But unfortunately, it wouldn't have changed what we could do for the tournaments, right? Those are just certain requires, requirements that they have. So, um, again, I don't know that writing a letter or doing anything along those lines. Um, you know, and I, and, and we're talking about a snack shack, right? But vandalism to the field, vandalism to the fencing, all these things go into play, right? We have to have a certain amount of stands and seats and fencing heights and, you know, level of play. So, uh, again, I don't know that it would have changed anything because I tried, you know, with, with the applications and seeing any accommodations we could come up with and having vendors there every day, something to provide it still for the families. Um, and ultimately it was, you know, the, the scoreboard is another issue and that's a donation and we're working, we're gonna work together on figuring that out. So that's another issue. We have to have a functioning scoreboard, right? So no, unfortunately, I don't think so. But for spring season, I appreciate what we're attempting to get ready to start working on. Um, and, and you guys working with me on that.
Thank you for that additional narrative. Anything else, councilmember?
No, I just look forward to having that tournament back next year, um, and stronger than ever. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just a thought, is maybe that's one thing we need to do when it's time to apply for next year's tournament to, um, provide that letter of, we are excited to have you back, assuming they give it to us.
Yeah. Um, so first of all, thank you to all the sports groups, uh, for their commitment to the city, in particular, calling out Cal Ripken. I'm intimately aware of all the improvements that you've done, uh, in the parks over the years. Uh, I've been very intimately in, uh, involved with the league and of course I sponsor things with you guys as well. I appreciate that. And I think obviously a, um, a better understanding of what the prerequisite is for us to host those tournaments, kind of identifying those hotspots, uh, would definitely be a way to proactively, uh, solve this from ever happening again. But we certainly appreciate, um, all of the, uh, all of the input and the robust, uh, conversation. So, uh, with that, um, I will call for the question here. If we can have, we have a first and then we have a second. And, uh, can we have, uh, all those in favor or do we need to do a roll call vote here? Okay, so we'll do a voice, uh, vote of affirmation. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no? Okay. It carries five zero. Thank you. Uh, committee liaison reports, please. Councilmember Elwood. Sonoma Clean Power, there we go.
Yes, Sonoma Clean Power. We had our first meeting of the year on, on February sixth. So during the meeting, we welcomed new members and CEO Cypher, Cypher's, um, took time to explain what, uh, is a Sonoma Clean Power, our mission, goals, and what exactly we do. So basically, it was an, um, organization review for the newcomer. And then we had the nomination and approved the appointment of a new chair and vice chair for the board of director, uh, for the next year. Uh, so the chair is, uh, Brian Barnacle of Petaluma and, uh, I am the vice chair. And then for the twenty twenty-five, um, project, we will have staff bring presentation about working, um, in, uh, work in education and workforce development and also, um, how, um, Sonoma Clean Power will have a customer support and incentives and a strategy initiative including the geozone, which is really important, um, for this year. And, um, because, um, during our last meeting on December fifth, twenty twenty-four, we had, uh, the magnitude seven point zero earthquake and that really did disturb, um, our Mendocino County with widespread outage and they were ordered to evacuate. So we, we didn't finish, um, the subject of, uh, working on, um, serving, um, our customer, uh, a subject that was budding. So staff brought it back. And so we were, uh, updated that they have been, um, working on only serving, um, during all this time, uh, individuals. But for now, we are also focusing on helping our commercial customers to save on power costs as well. And we had a few updates on some of our programs like, uh, Inflation Reduction Act, uh, uh, the heat pump, heating and cooling incentive. Uh, so for this program, um, so we will provide up to eight thousand dollars to income qualified, single and multiple home, um, for heating system, um, for heating pump and cooling system. So, um, this program is managed by the California Energy, um, Commission. And for the first phase, they will be working with Tech Clean California, uh, for a rebate program. So the eight thousand dollars is actually a rebate program that will be given to some of our, um, customers. And also, um, for that being said, so staff have been reaching out to our customers so that they can take advantage of that specific rebate program. Um, the state, uh, is giving about forty-five million dollars, um, for that specific program. Um, and then we had a little update also on, on, uh, the heat and, the heat pump water incentive for public, uh, buildings. They will be working with our schools and, and cities as well. Then we got our updates on, um, weather, weatherization, education collaboration with the California Indian Museum and Cultural Center. And the Sonoma Clean Power will provide, um, six educational workshop on weatherization techniques, um, with the focus on mitigation, uh, wildfire. So this will bring, this will be, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, uh, year. And we are hoping to reach about hundred and twenty attendee. Hopefully that goal will be, uh, reached. And on the, uh, legislation and regulation update, PG&E proposed to withdraw, uh, Sun, uh, SCU Monterey, University of, um, Monterey Bay Campus to the electrification pilot program because they give the reason, um, because of operational challenges, delay challenge, uh, delay in procuring equipment for, um, the pipeline replacement. And also the other reason was, uh, for, um, higher than expected environmental remediation cost. So basically, they just didn't wanna do it anymore and they gave some reason. But, uh, Sonoma Clean Power, we are still in support of that pilot program and hopefully, um, something will be done because, um, this- of that pilot program, and hopefully, something will be done because this pilot, from this pilot, we were planning to pursue building decarbonization on significant scale, but PG&E is backing off. So we will have more updates on our next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez, please.
There is no Gulf Oversight Committee meeting. It's not until next Tuesday.
Okay. All right. So that's you or me? No, it's, it's you, the WAC tack.
Me. Yeah. I will just give you my personal highlights. You can, of course, always go back to the notes from the February 2 WAC meeting. Highlights were the Sonoma Marin Water, Saving Water Partnership. Overall, since 2013, which was kind of the benchmark compared to last year, 2024, water use is down about 23%. So we're doing a pretty darn good job saving water overall in the region. Fix a Leak Week's coming up March 17 through the 23rd. You can get a little tablet even mailed to you from the Saving Water Partnership, and you put it in your toilet, and it'll let you know if you've got a leak. Why spend extra money on water that isn't getting used to its fullest potential? So that's the Di Tab Challenge, February 3, which is now through March 31. You can get those tabs. Let's see here. More of that, savingwaterpartnership.org. One other fun thing from the biological opinion status update was that we got to see some of the images from the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Project that they're working on. They're using drones to survey the project region and detect the different features of the winter habitat that's available for the fish, and then kind of see that comparison of the flows from summer and winter. And what's always going to be true is like runoff from the storms moves more of the dirt back into the river. So it's always going to need to be kind of, sediment's always going to need to be removed to keep the fish having a good place to stay. But all in all, it's a really neat project, and the Russian River Watershed Fish Spawning Surveys recently came out with really positive news. It's the highest Coho salmon count on all the surveys that they've had there in the past 20 years. So there's hope, and it is also looking very promising for Steelhead. They did just have the festival last weekend. I didn't get to attend, unfortunately. And then just an update on Potter Valley Project, PG&E released their draft license surrender application, and then there's the 30-day public comment period. Basically, part one outlines the dam removal, and part two is about the design of the new facility. So the design is being worked on right now. The grant, I think, covers like taking the design from 30% done to 60% done. So there's probably going to be more update on that when I'm attending the next WAC meeting. A few other governmental affairs things, and each of the, I'd say, department heads gave an update about a few things that they've been working on. So it was nice to hear from the staff who always attend but never really get to tell us specifically what they're working on. And that's the excitement. There was no San Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability meeting.
Right. Okay, let's start out with city selection committee meetings, actually of 31st of January and the 3rd of February. And I'll just try to recount for all of you here what exactly transpired. On Wednesday, January 29, I received notice through, through our clerk, that mayors and council members had not been notified of an opportunity to nominate one or more supervisors and one or more mayors or council members to serve on the California Coastal Commission. I called a special meeting on January 31 to inform all the mayors of this oversight and to share with them the opportunity. At that meeting, we received three letters of interest, one from Supervisor Hopkins, another from Councilmember Ariel Kelly, and the third from myself. We tentatively scheduled another meeting for Monday, February 3. As our protocols state that if any other letters were to come forward by that Monday date, we need to receive them and take action. There was one other letter that came forward, that of Mayor Steven Zollman of Sebastopol. The committee voted to advance all letters of interest forward to the Senate Rules Committee per their protocols on Monday. Now for SCTARCPA, well, you can now call us Sonoma County Transportation and Climate Authorities. We have rebranded for better clarity, operational efficiency, and to position ourselves better for regional grant opportunities. We elected new officers with Supervisor Hopkins remaining chair and Ariel Kelly being voted in as vice chair. Also on the executive team, our supervisor, David Rabbit, and Councilmember Nisa Hinton of Sebastopol. We updated our operational work plan through 2028. We entered into a cooperative agreement with the county of Sonoma, the Go Sonoma Roads portion of the program, excuse me, and we approved our legislative principles for the upcoming year. We also received an update on the Active Transportation Plan, the one we recently discussed, and our Safe Roots School, as well as our Vision Zero initiatives. And I've given you all a nice little shiny book about SCTARCPA report for 2024 for your leisurely reading. And that ends it. And I don't believe Councilmember Adams has anything. Reports under Governmental Code Section 5323 2.3, Economic Perspective. That was on the 30th of January. Councilmember Rodriguez, you care to comment?
I thought the panel was great. That was moderated by Supervisor and Chair Linda Hopkins. It gave a great perspective. It wasn't kind of the usual, like, Sonoma County's a bubble, and you're great, when everyone in the audience is kind of like, okay, my gas was a lot of money today. They covered a whole bunch of things, including insurance and the effects, right, when you're in these disaster areas or have dealt with wildfires and flooding. And I'm forgetting a few more, but I thought it was one of the better ones I've attended, to be honest.
Thank you. And I do not know who attended Rona Park Chamber of Commerce noon times. Did anyone attend? Please, Councilmember Adams, what is your report?
There was a really great meeting. There was a gal there that touched a lot about HR requirements for businesses, and pretty well attended. Thank you.
Thank you. And several of us were at the Rotary Crab Feed. Would you like to take a stab at it, Councilmember Elwood?
Yeah, that was really, yeah, the crab, and also the steak was good. I liked that there was a lot of, how can I say that? The meeting was well attended, and the fact that there was a lot of silent action items that also was really, you know, donated by the public, and the way people were betting on it really showed that really people cared about what Rotary has been doing, even though I am not a Rotarian, but I can see the impact that Rotary has had, not only in our schools. I mean, every walk of life Rotary is present. So it was really joyful to join that event. It was well done.
Thank you. I'm glad everyone had a good time. Councilmember Adams, anything additional?
Yep.
All right, we're going to go to Communications 10. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yep, just my community update. The Rona Park, well, first off, tomorrow, and I think there might be, there still might be tickets left. They're free. Apologies, I've been battling a migraine. So tomorrow at Becoming Independent, doors open at 10:30, and it is Bridging the Technology Divide, presented by Lucien. Saturday is the Rona Park Chamber of Commerce Crab Feed. It is sold out. But if you didn't get tickets to that and want something to do, Home is Where the Art Is is also happening at the Rona Park Chamber, excuse me, Community Center beforehand, beginning at 4:00 PM. There will be artwork there available for purchase created by residents at Le Bath Landing. So you can kind of find more on their website. On the 14th, our Public Safety Department was going to have cookies with the cop, but that has been postponed due to the weather. Please be mindful when you're driving with the weather and be prepared. And Expressway, there is lots of traffic because lights are being removed. So please keep that in mind. And lastly, well, not, not lastly, there's two, sorry.
Okay.
Sonoma State University's Black Student Union is celebrating Black History Month. Please check out their info. They've got quite a bit of events going on. Their Black Joy event is going to be on Thursday. So hopefully, during our break, I'll go swing by. And on the 21st, it is a hot topic, but I'd like to share our, many of our state legislators, so Assemblymember Connolly, Assemblymember Rogers, Congressman Thompson, Senator Mike McGuire, Senator Cabaldin, they are hosting like a legislators' town hall at Sonoma State on February 21 to discuss the proposed cuts, and I think want to hear more from their constituents as well. So you can check out their social medias for that. I think that's it.
Any other communications?
Happy belated birthday.
Oh, thanks. Councilmember Adams?
I did receive an email today. I think it was copied to everybody, and I'd just like to share it. It says, lately, I've noticed that our friendly city looks cleaner. When I pointed this out to a friend who serves on the council, she gave the credit to the city manager, Marcella Piedra, and her team. According to my friend, Ms. Piedra runs a pretty tight ship, emphasis on pretty. So I thought it was a very nice compliment. City looks great. City looks great. I think it looks great. I get more compliments than I can even imagine. That's my communication that I have something under, number 11, too.
All right. Any other communications? Please.
I just want to say that I sat in on the training that Officer Hartnett offered for driver safety for teens, and it was wonderful. There were about 10-ish young folk with their parents there, which made it amazing, great dynamic. But Felicity, Officer Hartnett did a great job of making it engaging and, I'll say, fun. I don't know if the teenagers had as much fun, but it was everything from like kind of a sit-down, highlights of what to do if you are pulled over, what to do if there's sirens behind you, you know, how to move over safely to the side of the road. It was just phenomenal. And then the group went out to the Future Downtown site and did some practice runs where drivers got to practice, you know, the fire engine's coming up behind you, which way do you pull over, to the left or the right? It's the right. But Officer Hartnett made a point in her presentation to be like, you'd be amazed how many people freak out and forget what to do. So as she said, it wasn't a lesson in like how to talk your way out of a ticket, but kind of like how not to get a ticket in the first place. And, you know, we had quite a few officers attend in support, and they got to all go around and talk about what their favorite, you know, moving violations were to enforce. And it was just really fun, and I thought she did a great job. And one of the leaders from the Davis Public Safety Department was there to get inspired, as a lot of other cities do, coming here to see kind of how it's done, so that that's something that they can bring to their city as well. So kudos to her.
Thank you. And I think we have one more.
I just wanted to also acknowledge Vice Mayor and Councilmember Elwood and I were able to attend the Hive opening for NAACP and Health Action. Yes, you were the Vice Mayor. It was great. It was great to be in community, and what they have to offer, it's a great space if you're looking to host like a meeting or conference. And they provide, as many people might not know, it is not just for the black community. It is for community. And so they have a ton of services and beautiful, beautiful space with murals. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. We're going to 11, adding agenda items to a future council meeting?
I have something to add. I know we've talked about this before, but having a little primer on how the protocols work, I take exception to the way the protocols were inserted into the meeting tonight. I think we need clarification. So if we could put that on a future meeting agenda, or maybe talk about it on Thursday, I think that's something we need to visit.
Okay, that requires a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Please let us know.
Thank you.
Public comment? Okay, seeing none, this meeting's adjourned.